Okay, let's go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 11th at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado, Etac, Stark?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Wolf?
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitz?
Malley?
Here.
Uer, Serone, and McFadden?
Here.
Okay, so we do have eight of the fourteen aldermen present, so we do have a quorum to conduct business. Next item is item number two, which is approval of the minutes for August 28, 2018. Anybody have any comments or questions on those minutes? Hearing none, could I get a motion?
Second?
Motion by Chancet, second by Stark, to recommend a city council approval of the minutes for the August 28, 2018 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess we are not.
Motion's carried. Let the record reflect, Alderman Wolf has just entered the meeting. Item number three is items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything, Laura?
Yes, we'd like to move item thirteen to after item eight.
Okay, so that will call that item eight.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that right, Rahat?
Yes, okay. All right, good. Anybody have anything else?
Eight, nine, and ten all go together.
Yes.
Eight, nine, and ten all go together.
I'm sorry?
Eight, nine, and ten all go together.
Eight, nine, and ten go together, okay.
Oh, wait, Rahat?
No, nine, ten.
So just number eight. Thank you.
All right. All right, item four is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody from the public have anything for us that is not on the agenda? Okay, we're gonna go on to item number five, which is approval for the Class D1 liquor license for Riverside Pizza and Pub. Alderman, McFadden, you taking these tonight?
I've got them tonight, thanks. All right, this is for the approval of a Class D1 liquor license, application for the RP3 Group doing businesses Riverside Pizza and Pub. The Potavia Police Department conducted an investigation and background check to determine whether the company, RP3 Group LLC, doing businesses Riverside Pizza and Pub and located at 142 West Wilson Street. And with company owner Brian Panazzo and operating partners Michael Caston, Steve Niles, and Justin Musgrave might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city of Potavia. All the required documents have been submitted by the business, and no problems were found that would preclude the company owners or managers for receiving a Class D1 restaurant liquor license as of this date. So are there any questions?
Is the petitioner here?
No.
Doesn't look like it, okay.
Do we know when they're gonna open?
No. Right now, they are in the demolition phase of their remodeling, and they have submitted plans for their remodeling, so there has been progress, but I'm not sure of what date they'll be open.
I'll make the motion that we recommend a council, Class D1 liquor license, application for the RP3 Group LLC at 142 West Wilson Street, Potavia.
Second.
All right, there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so that'll go on, maybe we should put that on the regular agenda, Drew, so we can have some discussion about it if we'd like to.
Yeah, that'll come to the September 17th city council.
Okay. All right, next item is item six, Resolution 18-105R, awarding a grant under the Downtown Improvement Grant Program for 129 South Potavia Avenue. Alderman, McFadden?
Thank you. This Chris brought to us somewhat informally earlier. This is for remodeling of the former Stash's Barber Shop. Downtown Improvement, the improvement grant was submitted by John Happel, the property owner. The property contained is a two-story building dating to 1903 and is wholly located within the city's TIF district. Through a two-pronged application requesting financial assistance under the city's Downtown Improvement Grant, facade improvement grant, Mr. Happel is requesting two 50/50 matching grants to assist in funding certain building interior and exterior improvements. And those are, the Downtown Improvement Grant are to build out and rehab two new residential units with HVAC, plumbing, electrical, for a total of $46,206. The total grant request, $15,000 or 50% of the total expenditures, whichever is less. And the, under the facade improvement grant, it'll be redoing windows, installation only, purchase of the custom-made windows and doors, and the total expenditure on that will be $24,941. The grant request is for $5,000 or 50% of the total expenditures, whichever is less. Chris, anything else to add to that?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to say very generally that this is really the kind of project that TIF grants are all about. You're talking about a gentleman that looked at a building that was really in great disrepair, as you people probably remember, was a difficult sell. He approached the city back in 2015 and said, "I'd like to buy this, but it's a huge undertaking. It's a big project, but it'll be, you know, something of a labor love," because he can create this new building look on the main drag, north-south drag of town, and provide a space both for more living quarters as well as an office in this, or studio in this case, for his wife's business. So you're hitting on so many of the elements. You've got, you know, the TIF encouraging private investment, you've got rehab and preservation of an historic building right in the downtown, you're bringing in new business, new residents. You've got, again, a facade improvement to bring a building back up, both aesthetically as well preserving the structural integrity of the building, and you're creating a new business opportunity. So I think the council, who have historically supported these types of projects, should feel very good about this particular project. I know I do. The long and the short of it is, in terms of dollars amount, by the time Mr., not including the purchase price, but by the time Mr. Happel has completed with both his interior and exterior building improvements, it'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000. All in, the city will be supporting it with $40,000 over this multi-phase project, which amounts to just over 13%. So I think that's a good bang for our buck, in terms of ratio private versus public investment. So that said, Mr. Happel is here. I'm sure he'd be happy to come up to answer any questions, if there are any, in the council, and of course, I'm here to do the same. Nick?
Chris, I know last year there was 20 grand, and then this is another 20. Was that out of the TIF as well?
Yes, they're both out of the TIF.
What was that for?
That was for interior improvements, it was not a facade improvement. It was, oh, I think we did some plumbing and electrical and HVAC work. All improvements to permanent infrastructure and components to the building.
Okay, so, and then just to clarify with the TIF funding, I mean, their increments clearly gonna go up with those improvements, but...
I think definitely, I think the two things that'll happen is the apartments upstairs will rent for at least market rate, they're really gonna be well-appointed, and they're very well-located. And I think also, fill in that commercial space, as we continue to fill more space with new and more eclectic uses, I think the rising tide for all boats, I think will raise, I'm sure of it, over time will raise market rental rates, which in a commercial building is what is utilized in determining assessed value, because they use an income approach. So, you know, in time, we may not see the bang for the buck right away, because there's no real change to the square foot floor area, but you'll see it over time based on the use and the rental rates for both the apartments as well as the commercial space.
Thank you.
Mr. Happel, would you like to come up?
John Happel, 129 South Potavia Avenue. First of all, just thank you for making the time two weeks ago for letting my wife come and present her business. So thank you very much for that. You know, just to elaborate on what Chris has said, we're taking an old structure and completely rehabbing it. I mean, we're doing complete electric from, through the entire building, plumbing through the whole entire building. We've put roof, new roof, insulated, leveled the floors, we're putting new plumbing in through the entire building. We've tuck-pointed the inside and outside of the building. We're putting a whole new, we've put all new windows in at this point, we're putting a new storefront in with doors. Have 9,000 pounds of maple flooring sitting in my shop right now, waiting to go in on both floors. So we're doing a complete renovation, and, you know, new kitchens upstairs, so the apartments are gonna be really nice, finished out very, very nicely. So also with my wife's art studio downstairs, that's, we're pulling out all stops. I mean, we're doing everything to really beautify the inside of the building, also the exterior. Is there any questions that I can answer?
When do you think you're gonna be completed with the project?
I'm dreaming this winter, for sure. We're, the last thing we're gonna do is put a porch on the back, so that'll probably be sometime next year. But the whole interior, front facade, we just got approved, and that's going in in October. And we're gonna, we've got about two months of work to do on it, and we're planning on having it finished by late February.
The porch you just mentioned, does that have to be done before occupancy of the apartments for egress?
They need to make some provisions for egress. I'm not sure if that would work either, but I guess they want to make some.
Well, I'm supportive of it, this certainly meets all the criteria of these programs that we started, what, Scott, 10 years ago? Eight, 10 years ago? It certainly meets all the criteria for that intent, and I'm excited about the fact that we've got somebody that wants to make this type of an investment in one of these old buildings that we have downtown. We've seen so many of them fall apart and just become into a position where it just becomes so cost-prohibitive to preserve them. So it's good to see you going through with this.
This was definitely averging that, I would say.
Marty?
Yeah, I just wanna kind of also reiterate, when you were in here for your part, your wife's part is also kind of complementary to your part of the business on that, and that industry or the business model for your type of business is a multi-billion dollar a year investment right now that communities are kind of seeking out for their residents, because that's one of the businesses' types that residents do want, and we do have a lot of those type of businesses moving here, so best of luck.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I will make a motion that we recommend a council for approval, resident, Resolution 18-105R, for the Downtown Improvement Grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Should we talk about that too, put that on the regular agenda?
I think so.
I think so.
We should, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's also Resolution 100, you coming to 106-R?
We're getting there.
Yeah, we're getting there.
The next item on the agenda then is Resolution 106R, 18-106R. Drew?
Thank you. 18-106R is the second part of the discussion we just had, and I'll make a motion, we recommend Resolution 18-106R, awarding a facade improvement matching grant, in the amount of $5,000 or 50% of actual project costs, whichever is the lesser amount.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So these will both go on the next city council meeting?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, item number eight is the discussion on the dam ownership, and Alderman, McFadden, you've got that also?
I do. Busy night for me tonight. All right, I'm gonna punt this one directly to Laura to introduce.
Okay, so we have Bruce Goldsmith, he's here from a law firm called Gaikma, and the reason why we hired Bruce was because he is an expert in riparian rights, and we had the question of whether the city of Potavia had any legal standing to disclaim ownership of the dam, and we just wanted to put the matter to rest, and so we wanted to hire a preeminent attorney in this field to provide us with legal opinion, looking at every possible avenue. And so with that, I will turn it over to Bruce.
Thank you for the complimentary introduction. I'm with the law firm, Gaikma Casette, which is a national law firm, but I'm just a little dirt lawyer here in the Fox Valley. I also do some other things as well, but to just give you a little background, very short background, I've done real estate development work for over 30 years. From time to time, riparian rights comes up, and I'll explain to you what that is. It has to do with who is responsible for the transfer of water from one property to another. It's a doctrine that goes back to England many centuries ago, and it has a particular application to this project, but it's actually a secondary consideration, because the primary consideration is who has owned the dam and who owns it today. And then I can explain it to you in these other terms as well. So historically, it's a fascinating project, because in 1835, the dam was built here. It was built by the Van Nordwick family to run a mill, and so this community has a long history of having mills along the river. Historically, nothing really happened until 1904. At that point, a different group of companies, one of which is, again, partly owned by Van Nordwick, or maybe all owned, three mill companies, a wagon manufacturer, and a pump company, enter into agreement to perpetually maintain the dam. So from the early history of the dam, it was always used for some kind of commercial purpose. These different businesses got together in the early 1900s, and they agreed to collectively perpetually maintain the dam. Then nothing happens significantly from a legal perspective until 1975. In 1975, apparently, the city had the opportunity to have the dam rebuilt. In order to get the dam rebuilt, the city had to gain ownership of the dam, and it was able to get funding from the Illinois, from the state of Illinois to actually construct the dam. Ironically, there is no history of a permit ever being issued for the dam, we'll talk about that a little later in terms of the statutory control over dams as well. But in any event, the dam was built, or rebuilt, and in order for that to happen, there were nine property owners, including the Potavia Park District, that transferred ownership of interests in the dam to the city. As way of history, the dam was always described in various legal transfers of title, and in particular, in 1975, when these various property owners, who owned on each side of the river, were transferring their interest in the little pieces of property where the dam is affixed to the west and east banks of that side of the river, they gave up their rights. So there were a total of nine property owners, they all gave up rights at that time, and the city accepted those deeds and transferred title. And this is confirmed by both, I think Scott did research, I know the Chicago Title issued a title report showing that that was the transfer ownership, but the kind of the challenge was, well, how do individuals own a dam? Because isn't that on a body of water, and isn't that subject to, in this case, the state of Illinois? Well, the answer is no, actually, dams have been historically owned by private parties, they've been owned by governmental units, and have been owned by the state of Illinois, depending on the historical circumstances. So the first line of analysis was just to figure out what happened historically from a title standpoint. No question that the dam was owned by private parties, shows up in the deeds, the deed transfers that dam, as well as the property on each side of the dam, to the city in 1975. And that kind of would end the discussion, but I was asked to look further. So the doctrine of riparian rights talks about who has the responsibility in these circumstances, and the answer is, the property owners on each side of the river, in this case, would have been responsible for the dam as long as it hadn't been transferred to somebody else. So by virtue of owning the west side of the dam and the east side of the dam, you owned the riverbed, too. If it was one owner, back in 1835, Van Nordwick owned the dam and both sides, so there was clearly an ownership from back in 1835. Fast forward, various different people owned pieces of those properties, they acquired the dam by owning pieces of those properties. Shared ownership in the sense that you had people on the east side, you had people on the west side, but they owned the dam as well. Fast forward to 1975, those nine sets of parties transferred their ownership of the dam, so they transferred the property on both sides, and the dam came with it, specifically referred to in the deeds, and as a matter of riparian rights, putting aside the legal title, you would be, by your owning the west side and the east side, you own the dam in the middle, because you own the riverbed between the north and south ends, if we can call it north and south. Between your property limits on each side, you own everything in between in terms of the riverbed. So then you own the riverbed as well. Even if all that weren't true, the state of Illinois also has such a set of statutory conditions and regulations that deal with dams, and the state has always recognized both private owners, governmental owners, and the state as owners of dams. So there are extensive statutory provisions with respect to dams, and there are extensive regulatory provisions with respect to maintenance of dams. So once you own a dam, whether you're a private party or governmental unit, you have a duty to maintain the dam. So from 1975 on, if nothing else would've been true, just by virtue of taking ownership, you would've had a duty to maintain. There also was that perpetual maintenance obligation that transferred from 1905, that's still applied, that's still a matter of record, so that would apply. And then you had the state regulations that said that if you own a dam, you have to maintain the dam. So for all those different reasons, when the city acquired title to the dam, it acquired the obligation to maintain the dam going forward. My understanding is then historically, at some point, your insurance carrier raised some concerns about safety, which led to, excuse me, which led to the requirements of having signage and lighting as you went forward in order to get your necessary insurance protection, and so on top of that, you assumed some new duties, which were beyond what would have been just the maintenance requirements. But they all go into kind of a package of really recognizing that the city's been responsible since 1975 for this dam. And I'm, actually, that kind of concludes the main part of what I was asked to look at. There was a second question, so the law has a doctrine called a stopple, or promissory stopple. If you rely to your detriment on something that somebody promises to do for you, you can actually sue that person without actually having a contract, in order to hold that person responsible. So if I agree to build a building and preserve a cross-access easement for somebody to have access to their property, and I don't do that, I might be held responsible in this doctrine of promissory stopple, because I told the neighbor I was gonna do it, and then I didn't do it. In this context, the city originally thought, at least some of the people at the time thought that, by taking title to the dam, once the dam was constructed, the state would take ownership of the dam. And that was the concept, promissory stopple. Well, as you might appreciate, governments don't have the same benefits of private citizens on this kind of doctrine, because you can make a promise to your residents, and they could come back and say, "Hey, you promised me to do this, you didn't do it, I relied on it, and I built a house here," or whatever, and now they want you to do whatever you promised to do, and of course, you may never have really committed to doing that. Same thing applies here, the state, we couldn't find any, I think the staff looked extensively, there's no documentation that shows that the state, in granting the construction money, was also agreeing to take ownership of the dam and the maintenance going forward. And beyond that, the courts don't recognize promissory stopple, except in very rare instances with regard to governmental units, for public policy reasons. And beyond that, then we have statute limitations, and even if the promise had been made, somebody would've had done something in the late 70s or early 80s, within the normal statute, which would be five years of the time the promise had been made, assuming that you could make an argument for that. So those are kind of the two themes, the main theme is, you've owned the dam since 1975, you've had a maintenance responsibility since that time, and you continue to have that, and you'll have it as long as you own it. And alternatively, it's way too late, and it's a doctrine that has very limited applicability to suggest that the state is responsible in some way because of the original arrangement and taking ownership. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
So I guess everybody's looking at me like, "Are you gonna make a comment, Dave?" And my comment's gonna be very short. I'm the one that's been pushing all along, I have one of a couple that have been pushing all along, that we don't own the dam, because of the intent that was, you mentioned back in the 70s, early 70s. My father was the mayor back then, and he had mentioned to me many times, "David, we don't own the dam." The state, the intent was, if we got the rights to it, and the title to the adjoining properties, that the state would take the ownership over. So that's why I have been fighting all along, that we don't own the dam, because that was my understanding of the intent. Now, your second part of your conclusion here, kind of, didn't kind of, it did address that very thoroughly, so I certainly understand it. So I guess I'm sitting here tonight, ready to call uncle, as I was when we decided that we thought it would be prudent for the city to hire an attorney that's an expert in this, to make the final determination, so that we could move forward from here on, whether we owned it or whether we didn't own it. So with your remarks and your recommendation or your conclusion, I'm willing to accept the fact that we own the dam, and we are responsible for it, and so now, as we look forward to what we're gonna do with our riverbank, we can at least say that, okay, yes, we do own the dam, we have accepted that fact, but now we can go to the state, or IDNR, or whomever, and say, "We're no longer in this discussion with you about who owns it, now we're just in a discussion with you about, do you wanna remove it?" So that's kind of where I'm at with this whole thing, I'm willing to accept the fact and move forward. So I thank you for your process in this.
Yeah, I just wanna say that I came with no preconception of what the answer would be, and I knew that there were two sides within the council on this, and actually, I talked to my guru of title, and he wasn't so sure until I did the research that led to this conclusion, and he's adding it to his training material. So it wasn't, you know, a foregone conclusion, but once you look at the laws, it's kind of interesting, in the 1870s, there was a question of whether the Fox River was navigable, and that had an influence on how a certain case was decided. But there are a couple of cases from the 1800s, including one that involved a mill in Elgin, where the same kind of conclusion was reached, that multiple parties, private parties owned a dam, again, another mill up in Elgin, and so there's a fair amount of history on the Fox River alone, but, and surprisingly, at one time, the Fox was considered navigable, because I think De La Salle came down the Fox, and therefore, they thought that was enough. But of course, commercially, it's not navigable, so, but the bottom line is the result that I've concluded.
Thank you. Other questions? Mike?
So, I'm another voice from the wilderness, and I guess, you know, I appreciate everything you've presented to us, and I guess I'd have to comply with that, but I just, for clarity's sake, in 94, we were trying to then, again, deed the dam to the state, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Mayor, but you were mayor at that time. What is your recollection?
Well, I mean, there's always been the presence of the state of Illinois in the picture, because they're kind of the dictatorial agency here that says, "You can't do this, or you can't do that with the river." And I mean, I think, you know, the ultimate answer may be here, that dam just sits there until it basically just washes itself out, and it's already started to do that on the east side, where...
And it's already started to do that on the east side, where, when they built the original dam, they dug it very deep on the east bank. And so the water in the river has a tendency to always flow to the east and put it underneath the Chalhoun's windmill factory. And they built buildings right to the south or adjacent to the dam to take advantage of that water power that had been redirected there. So as you've seen right now, the east bank of the dam has washed away, it's cracked, it's gone. The state came in a few years ago and put in a temporary fix, some boulders and some rock. But, you know, in this age, when the taxpayers are not in a good mood, to go out and tell the taxpayers, hey, we're gonna float you a multimillion-dollar referendum for a dam that's really good for nothing, how do you think that would fly in Batavia? Do you think a whole bunch of people would vote for that? I don't think so. So I think it's, you know, it's just an issue that we're gonna have to live with. The bigger problem I see with it is, is that as a point of community danger, it is a very difficult place for, like, the fire department to go in and execute rescues from, because we can't really get right next to it very easily without, you know, carrying a bunch of equipment. We can't get trucks right down there by it, maybe on the east bank to some degree, but you're operating underneath a Commonwealth Edison High KV line that goes up to, is a backup to Geneva and St. Charles. So if we wanted to swing the tower ladder or the ladder truck out there, it would be a challenge for the fire department to do that, because you'd be operating under all that high voltage power. So, I mean, they've thought of all this, and, you know, we have had people die there. And during my tenure as mayor, we've had at least two die, that I'm aware of. And both of them are a mystery, we're not quite sure how they died. One was just above the dam, and it was a person that was up there fishing in the middle of the night, and she had people with her, and suddenly she was missing, and the fire department went out there, and we found her relatively quick, and she was dead. But her body was revolving around the dam. And the other one was another gentleman who supposedly was up there fishing, and we found him dead just below the dam, and his body was floating in the boil. And he had been up there in the middle of the night. So there are, there has been some tragedy up there, and, you know, it's not the, if you say to people, you know, what's the value of this dam, one of the first things the environmentalists will tell you is, well, it's the place that holds up all the residue from the Geneva and St. Charles sewer plant. And just to the north of it, in the base of the river there, you've got all kinds of residual deposits from the Geneva Dam, because it gets down to the Batavia Dam, and then it gets stopped and held up. So I've always been told that right there by the Fabian Parkway Bridge, that's not a very healthy part of the river, right there, because you've got this constant influence of the Geneva, and probably to some degree, the St. Charles sewer plant, because they're being held up by the presence of that dam. So I don't have a lot of good things to say about the dam. I know we had a referendum a few years ago, asking people, did we wanna keep the dam? And the vote was to do it. And I think back on that and reflect on it, because, I mean, some of the people who were involved in that are some of our better taxpayer watchers, but in the same token, you know, I don't know where they were thinking that we were gonna get the money to fix the dam if you were gonna save it. Because right now, by all appearances, it appears to me that the state of Illinois, in the current situation and in the future, is so flat-stretched for money, that I don't think fixing the dam in Batavia is gonna be anywhere near the priority list of the state of Illinois and the future of anybody that's probably sitting around this table.
So, well, just for clarity also, I don't think we should save the dam. I don't wanna rebuild the dam. And to your point about, what was it, 10, 12 years ago, when that referendum came out, you know, again, you know, the city was faced with a lot of half-truths and misinformation, that if we are forced to take the dam out, it's gonna cost us millions of dollars.
Absolutely.
And the people who were supporting this dam, because I remember clearly, people coming to my home, we need to save the dam. And these people with their misinformation and half-truths have cost the taxpayers of Batavia a large sum of money. And so, but I just wanted to see what your perspective was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah, so I thought this was absolutely fantastic outcome, in that I initially believed that it was the city's responsibility. But it goes to your, kind of the first part, the historical, you can see where, on paper, we own it. But then, I, it gave me pause, and why I suggested that we figure out a different way to resolve it, because you were so sure that we didn't own it. I think this way clarifies it, because it's not saying you were, your dad were wrong, it's just, it doesn't matter for what the state, because they didn't do enough, and it doesn't matter anyways, because it's so, it's too far. So with those things, it's still like, you're right if it was back then. But now, today, going to the referendum in 2000, it shouldn't have actually based on all of this. What I found actually really interesting, and kind of like, huh, at the same time, is that referendum shouldn't have been, do we wanna keep it or not? It should've been, do we wanna pay for the repairs for it, or do we wanna pay for the repairs to take it out? Because of the whole perpetual care element that's entered into this, that we own it, and we either have to fix it or remove it. And there's a paying it one way or another. And what, since I didn't live here in 2000, that kind of goes to, oh, I wish the decision was made one way or another to not just basically say punt, and just leave it as is without repairing it, because we have this legal obligation to maintain it. And that's what came out of it, that I'm just, in a way, it's actually good, because it gives us direction as policy. What do we need to do? Hey, Batavia, we own this, it's years ago that it was owned by us. It's crumbling, it's our responsibility to do something about it.
Dave?
Alan?
Alan?
I just wanted to, I think Mike originally had asked, you know, what exactly or where it fell apart back then. From my memory, we had actually had a resolution to give the ownership of the dam, you know, we had, at that time, we didn't have a question whether or not we owned it. We had to give it to the state if the referendum passed, and we were gonna remove the dam.
That's correct.
So at that point, what had happened at the state, and I asked, I think it was the head of Water Resources at the DNR, both the last two times we've been downstate, they never had a plan approved by the city, so they would never take title to the dam. That was, it was offered to them, but they never accepted it. So at that point, we still owned it. And what she said was, until there was a plan and the dam was removed, didn't talk about who was gonna pay for it or anything else, but once that happens, then the state will take, or would want to take, ownership of that piece of property in both shorelines. So that was where they left it from the state end, that's what DNR told me.
Anybody? Any other questions?
The only other question I have at this point, then, is, so we absolutely have finality to this? Do we need something more that, or do we vote to accept? I mean, there's nothing here tonight, really, but should there be something to state that the city council has voted and understood, that they accept the responsibility and the ownership of the dam?
I don't think that's necessary.
So the question doesn't come up again? I mean, I'm not, my kid might run for office someday and bring it up again, you know?
I can certainly prepare a resolution acknowledging that the city has received a legal opinion and accepts it as proof of the city's ownership of the Batavia Dam.
I think we should.
And I'd like to see, you know, a title document for it. I mean, to me, if we have that, there's numbers and description and everything, because I think that's important, to have that as well, and everybody to be aware of that, so that way, the day comes, when we do decide to do something with it, we got the piece of paper, the document, that we can sign, put in an envelope, and send to the state, and say, it's yours.
Do you think that would be advisable also, that there should be something more?
I think it would be prudent, just because there's so much been controversy about what your legal responsibilities are. Also, the title report has the recorded documents, so you have that benefit, and then, I don't wanna pump my own porn, but then you'd have a legal opinion on top of the title, and I think together, that would make a good package.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I would also support Dave in the call for the resolution, because, remember the part of the discussion before was, we do wanna settle this, because if we are having to go to the taxpayers and say, this is what we need to spend money for, we wanted to make sure that the ownership issue is completely put to rest, so that we can deal with the actual plan of what we need to do, and how we're gonna do it, whichever way that goes.
One quick thing, too. I'd also like to just know what the difference in cost is from ballpark, what we'd have to, what it would cost us to do anything with the dam now, versus if we were to remove it in 2000?
It all depends on what plan you decided to go with.
Let's just say, if we're gonna remove it, if we're gonna remove it, I would just like to know what the additional cost, what that burden to the city is.
There was a plan proposed that included retaining the depot pond, and the cost estimate on that was 8.5 million.
Would that put more concrete back into the river than we were taking out?
Right.
Which was not right.
Dan?
I have a question regarding the status of the strategic planning discussions, and then the planning discussions we had with the Park District. We've identified a policy issue tonight, are we gonna be putting money into it? Where are we with the Park District?
For the last two budgets, we have had $75,000 in the budget for joint discussions with the Park District. Frankly, I think they've been waiting for us to proceed, so that once this question was answered, that we could begin active engagement in that process. But it is part of both the Park District's strategic plan, as well as the draft strategic plan that's come from this past summer's project.
Well, I'm just gonna conclude with saying that I think, you know, I'm glad we went through this exercise, I'm glad Marty suggested it. I'd find it a very sad day, actually, because we're stuck now with the dam that we're accepting ownership of, that's falling apart. We're not gonna replace it, we're not gonna repair it, and we're gonna be looking at how we're gonna preserve the riverwalk and the depot pond, and it's a real, it's a real problem that we have no solution for.
Well, I'm sorry that I'm the one to bring you the news, but it was a challenging project to undertake, and I'm confident that I gave you good advice.
Well, thank you. I shouldn't say thank you. Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
We're good on this? Direction?
Yes, I have direction, thank you.
Back to you, then, Dave.
Okay, thanks, Drew. All right, we're gonna go now to item 13, which is, we're gonna call it 8A, and that's the presentation for the project update and discussion on the alterations for the Prairie Street reconstruction, Pine Street to Wilson Street, Phase 1 engineering. Alderman Wolf.
Okay. As you know, we are going to rebuild this section of Prairie Street, and Rahat's already there. Basically, this was in, all in the memo, or multiple memos that we had here. And we have to get this plan done, I think by 2020?
October of 2020.
October 2020.
Under construction by then.
Under construction by then. So with that, I'll turn it over, Rahat, let him go.
Thank you, Alderman. Just to recap, we got STP funding for this Prairie Street reconstruction project from south of the railroad to all the way to Pine Street. So when we met with IDOT to kick off the project, IDOT told us that we cannot just look at from the south of the railroad to the Pine Street, we have to include the intersection too. Which made the project a little bit more complicated, because when you include intersection, you have to look at the intersection capacity, you know, what's happening to the traffic, how much is the delay, what needs to be done, you know, to make it better. Obviously, that includes the railroad, and the railroad crosses both Pine Street and Wilson Street at the same time, which is very close to this intersection. So since then, we met with ICC, Illinois Commerce Commission, and also BNSF, who owns the railroad, and we kind of brainstormed what needs to be done, you know. BNSF and ICC are very adamant about making some improvements, which will make this project really, really challenging. So I'm not gonna get into a lot of those details right now, I'm gonna bring CMT, who is our consultant, who have been working through all these challenges for last few months, almost a year. Very recently, we met with IDOT again, because we saw that, I don't wanna give away the thunder, that, you know, even we make all this ultimate improvement, the money that we are gonna spend, the right-of-way that we are gonna take, is not gonna improve the traffic flow by that much. So we started questioning why we'll be spending that much money, you know, putting in right-turn lane on each leg, and left-turn lane on each leg, and really not achieve that much of success in doing all that. So I think in August, early August, we met with IDOT, FHWA, again, and we kind of told them, you know what, that ultimate improvement looks really good on paper, but we are not really seeing the improvement that we were hoping for by investing that much money. So we are coming back to you right now to get some, couple of decision points, and that's what CMT is gonna present. They are gonna go through the history a little bit, and then show you the advantages and disadvantages for those different options, and kind of seek your direction on those different options. With what the delay, I'm gonna ask Kelly and his team to come up and make that presentation.
He did steal some of my thunder, so we'll move forward here in a couple of slides. Overview and history, I think he touched on that a little bit. We'll get into some key points. Our first meeting with ICC, we had a field meeting, we walked the project, and we wanted to get their feedback to make sure that what we were proposing is something they would accept. And actually, we hadn't even really got to the point of what we're proposing, we kind of wanted to hear from them, what the requirements are gonna be before. We spent a lot of time doing the design, they're not going to approve. One of the biggest things that they came back with is, and it's highlighted on the PowerPoint slide there, if right-turn lanes are implemented, and given the way the geometrics and the width of the pavement are out there, and the crossings, they're gonna require a 10-foot-wide center barrier median to support the signal equipment. And by adding that 10-foot, 10-foot-wide barrier median on top of a left-turn lane and additional right-turn lane, causes some problems out there. And we'll get into the graphics of that here in a little bit, but I just wanted to point out one of the key things, as you see, there's several bullet points we talked about on the field, but the highlighted one, that's kind of the one that pretty much directed us in a direction that said, this is gonna cause a lot of problems. Excuse me. As Rahat mentioned, we also met with IDOT and FHWA to present the project, and the biggest thing that come out of that, they, you know, they approved the purpose and need, everybody knows that there's a project here, just a matter of what that project looked like, looks like. The very bottom bullet point item is the one thing that, we went to them and said, hey, here's what we found, here's what ICC is requiring. And, yeah, okay, from a capacity standpoint, you might see a little benefit on, if we put right-turn lanes on Wilson's, but we don't think it's enough to justify the cost or the impacts that we'll have based on the ICC requirements. So with that, they came back and agreed that they would more than likely approve a design exception of no right turns on Wilson, due to the impacts of parking and property impacts. With that, I'm gonna turn over a design engineer who spent a lot of time looking at the traffic and the geometrics. As you can see, I'll let him chat a little more about it, but this is what that right-turn lane looks like, along with the addition of the median.
So as Kelly mentioned, the last time you saw this, it did not include that 10-foot barrier median that the ICC has since come back and requested. The purpose for that barrier median is because the longest gate arm that they can do is 30 feet, and to get a gate arm across all three 10-foot-wide lanes, plus being behind the curb and being far enough off the back of and being far enough off the back of curb, that would be well beyond that 30-foot minimum. So that's why they're asking for another gate out in the middle to cover that other lane. So once we found out that the median was going to be there and having drawn this up the first time without it, we knew that the impacts were going to be severe without even having to draw it up. But we wanted to go ahead and draw it up to figure out how bad they would be so that we could then compare that to without the right-turn lanes. So as you can see, in the northeast quadrant, the impacts are much more severe to the service station. In the southwest quadrant, there are more impacts to the parking. We did our best to figure out how we could preserve as many parking spaces as possible by reconfiguring it to a one-way drive aisle and doing the 60-degree angle parking. In that case, we only saw a net loss of one parking space at that location. However, on-street parking on Wilson Street west of Prairie, we would lose that entire on-street parking on the north side of the road. And in addition to that, there are two parking spaces east of Prairie on the south side of the road that would also be impacted by that widening.
I mentioned that the pink area is where the work is.
Right. So the pink area would be where the roadway is widened for the improvements. And then the blue would be the new sidewalk location. And then we have some shaded purple areas where we'd be doing some improvements to the adjacent land use just to try to get everything to blend in back together and fit seamlessly. So this is without the right-turn lanes. As you can see, there's a lot less pink on the screen. There's a lot. It's primarily just improvements at the curb returns themselves just to be able to fit the designed vehicle without having to drive up and over the curb. And the widening pretty much uses the existing pavement out there to fit all the left-turn lanes in on Wilson Street. We did a Q analysis of existing and projected traffic in the corridor, primarily as a tool to provide to IDOT to show that, yes, we're not meeting your design criteria with doing the right-turn lanes. We understand that you want to reach a minimum level of service and you want delay to be a preferred amount. But the difference between adding the right-turn lanes and not adding the right-turn lanes was not that much. So we showed to them both in the AM and the PM peak that adding that right-turn lane, not that big of an improvement to the overall operations. So there's the PM peak. And then just to kind of summarize, comparing it, the existing conditions to what would happen if we did the right-turn lanes, what would happen if we didn't do the right-turn lanes, really, it's just a trade-off of, can you wait another 24 seconds on average in the PM peak to not have about 23 parking spaces removed and to impact another slightly more acreage of commercial property?
And that's in 2040, by the way, not today.
Right. Yeah. So the top line there is the current delay, year 2018. The second line is the year 2040. And that pretty much wraps up the part about what to do at that intersection. Do you want to?
So the first question that we have for the committee is that ultimate intersection improvement that he showed with a lot of pink. We, as a staff and our consultant, didn't feel that that adds value to this project. And that's what we presented to IDOT and FHWA. And we seek their blessing that this option is not considered at all for our project, that we will not even present it in our Phase 1 report. We are just going to say we are not going to do it, at least for now, you know. And we are not going to even consider doing it. So just wanted to get some congruence from the committee or discussion and see what committee thinks about that. Definitely affects both the businesses at that corner.
I mean, the net difference is 30 seconds, basically, based on your traffic study. If we were to add right-turn lanes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first.
The net benefit would be 32 seconds if we added right-turn lanes.
I think it was 24 seconds.
24 seconds. My bad. But then that also adds a lot more pain.
Yes.
Yeah.
And cost.
Right.
Well, I think if you look at that in 22 years. I'm hopeful in 22 years that we get another bridge built and then the traffic issues are not as bad at this intersection that wouldn't require us to have right-hand turn lanes. I mean, I think that's, to me, is the overall goal. If you look at where all those traffic movements were going, that's what we should really be thinking of to solve this intersection problem, is not rebuilding this intersection to try to squeeze another 50 cars through at every peak time. I just feel like there's no other place for them to go in that intersection or in or out of it. Just like if we were to go to four lanes on the bridge, it makes no sense because there's no place for it to go. You know, there has to be another route, you know, built across the river to make that work. That's my thought on it. Good luck with that. Got to start somewhere.
Well, I'm kind of feeling like I'm sounding like a broken record down here because it's kind of like the dam speech all over again. But, I mean, what they're talking about here, they didn't provide us with any special money to do any of this work. I mean, this was totally outside the $1,008,000 that we got as far as the original South Prairie Street grant.
So IDOT takes a little bit different view on that. When we got the money, it was for the portion south of the railroad.
Right.
But in IDOT's world, that's not a logical terminus point. So we have to go all the way to Wilson Street. So IDOT is saying, yes, your money kind of is allocated towards that reconstruction. But in your Phase 1 preliminary engineering, you have to look at this capacity, look at this intersection and see what's going on and what's your plan of making this improvement. So they are kind of asking us to look at, and that's what we talked about back in 2017 when we did a supplement to CMT's contract because they were going to look at this intersection coordinate with ICC and BNSF and kind of put together that ultimate plan, that this is what the ultimate improvement will look like. But we can do this right now or we can afford to do this much right now. So that's the second portion of this presentation.
Well, I mean, I think IDOT has now reached that realization, have they not, that we can't go into this intersection and spend all this money?
No, they are not saying that. They are saying, you can do whatever you want, but you are getting only 1.8 million from us.
Right, right.
That's what they are saying.
Right. That's what they're saying. So we can do this. What we said we were going to do from the railroad tracks south down to Pine Street, that's the $1,008,000.
That's not what they're saying.
So there are two options how we can spend the $1,008,000. So first thing is, that's why we are, this is the first decision, that this ultimate improvement, do we even consider that at some point, if we get funding in future for doing some improvements, do we even, do we want to put it in the report? That way, it's already been documented and we can proceed from there on. Like, if you decide to do this portion, it will be in the Phase 1 preliminary engineering report. And then you build on this to do your design engineering. So we are asking that question to the council. Do you even want to put it in the report that this is something that we want to consider?
So I'm confused. The $1,008,000 that we're supposed to be getting from IDOT, that they've committed to us to do this as long as we're under construction.
Federal money, it's not IDOT.
I'm sorry, federal money. Is that at all in jeopardy if we say, no, we don't want to entertain any improvements to north of the railroad tracks?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. I've had the opportunity to have the state transportation secretary in my car on several occasions in this intersection. So he's aware of it. And so I'm confident that we'll be able to do what we wanted to do here. The bigger problem we got here is, is that the current surface transportation program, which they call the STP in Chicago, the current one's expiring. And they're in the process of rewriting all the rules of how the money is going to be distributed in the future. And so this one falls under the old system. But the deal is, is that all the projects that are there in the can right now have to be under construction by October of 2020 where the money comes off the street. And so I don't want Batavia to lose a $1,845,000 or some such number on this particular project because, I mean, this is something now that we don't have to go to our own, you know, road fund or we don't have to put this on the backs of the taxpayers of Batavia to any great degree because we got this grant to rebuild Prairie Street from south of the railroad tracks down to Pine Street. And I think everybody up the ladder gets this. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do this. And I think Rahat just said it, that IDOT's not indicating that they're going to stop us from doing it. I think they're trying to encourage us to consider it as something to maybe in a future project. But I don't know, do they want us to have some plans drawn up slightly showing what we would do?
We, I mean, they are calling it a preliminary engineering where you are including this intersection into the overall design process and see what's going on in the intersection, too.
I think what Rahat just said is what the state wants from us or what IDOT wants from us is they want the whole plan. Even if we're only going to build 3/4 of it, they want to know what way we want to go with that intersection before they approve the rest of this. So I think that's the reality is, like, you don't want to design one section of the road in a vacuum and then come back three years later and say, okay, we can finally afford to do this intersection, but we're going to change the way it hooks up to the rest of it. So I think that's what they really want an answer from us tonight is, one, do we or don't we want the right-hand turn lanes on Wilson and take away all that property and parking spaces and, you know, that? And whatever the cost would be to do that? Or do we want to go with the simpler intersection design, basically in the same right-of-way we have now?
Do we have?
What is the cost? Do you have any things worked up for a cost on that? I mean, you're asking us to approve it or disapprove it, and we don't even know what costs are.
I don't know. I guess I look at the cost as, we lost all those parking spaces and you're basically going to take away a parking lot for one business, which probably would kill that business.
I agree. I agree with that.
So that cost is there something.
Just getting all the information. That's all I'm looking for, not to.
So, I mean, we have two things, going back to you. One is, make a decision theoretically whether we want the right turn, or no right turn, down the road, when we decide to do it, if we do it, all that. The second thing is, is do we want to create these, go ahead with the preliminary engineering for this intersection, kind of rough in the plumbing, so to speak, when we finish the basement and decide to do that intersection, correct?
Absolutely.
And so my question would be, is it more cost-effective to do that now, to do that pre-engineering and get that done so we have it ready? Or will that cost us more down the road to do?
So the PDR is typically valid for three years, am I, all the environmental assessment and all that? So typically, these things are valid for three years. If we think that we are going to pursue this, we can pursue some funding and all that. And then, let's say, five years from now, we get some funding. At that point, you just have to update a couple of those environment analyzers, biological assessment on all that. So it doesn't cost that much, as you said, roughing the plumbing.
Right.
So it don't cost that much at that point because we are updating the PDR that we created five years ago. But if we don't even consider this, then you have to go back and start from zero again and tear apart your basement and put the rough plumbing again.
Right.
You know, I mean, do we even have a choice whether we stay within the right-of-way that we now own? Or, I mean, if we, do we have two choices? One is stay within the right-of-way and the other one is put in the right-turn lanes with the center median? Or, I'm confused on that. Do we have a choice? Or if we want to improve it, do we have to put in a center median with the right-turn lanes?
Yeah, go ahead. You have basically two options in front of you. When we met with IDOT, we proposed the idea of not putting in the right-turn lanes. And that's when they said, yeah, we would consider that. We would definitely consider that as a design exception, they call it, in the project development report, which is the final preliminary design we give them and they sign off of. To answer your question as far as right-of-way impact, obviously, the right-turn lane with the median is a bigger right-of-way impact. We do have some minor impacts if we go without the right-turn lanes, but nothing is going to take a business out or take, there'll be some parking impacted, but nothing of magnitude that you see on this right-turn addition. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And they're allowing us to, if you don't mind me, they're allowing us to say, submit the report, but you need to do the report for the entire corridor, including everything south of the tracks and the intersection. However, we can do one or two things with the intersection when we submit it, with the right turns and without. And by the way, IDOT says you don't need to show the right-turn lanes because we'll give you a design exception.
Marty?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. So they're saying they want the entire plan from Prairie to Wilson.
Entire study.
Right, entire study.
The study has to include all.
And they don't care if the 1.8 gets spent Prairie to Wilson or Prairie to Webster?
You can spend it, you can do the project as a whole and the rest of the presentation. And I'll just kind of talk from it here now. They're allowing us, and that was the second question we had for IDOT, can we stage how we spend the money? Can we either do south of the tracks, and I'll fast forward to the slides here?
Because the part that I want to know is, if they're saying you can spend the money on Prairie or Pine to Wilson, and they don't care which way you spend it, if we did only just say, no, we're only doing from Webster to Pine, and then at a later date, try to find some, secure some other grants or financing, will they say, no, that was included in the original pot? I don't want to put it in, say.
Yeah, from the financing, they're allowing us to break the project up. The answer to your first question is, whether it's a question or not, your first statement, they will allow us to break the project up to help balance the cost. So we looked at it from two stages. One, Pine Street to just south of Webster, the railroad tracks, we'll do some milling overlay in there. But we're not getting into the intersection at all. That's one stage, that we can do that or we can do the entire intersection based on what we present in the preliminary study. So if it's the right-turn lanes, we can do that one. Or we can do the one without the right-turn lanes for the intersection. So you can break it up.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't.
Hurt yourself later as far as asking for more funding?
Absolutely.
That's a million dollar question there. I mean, they said, and I'm not a funding expert on this, but they did not, and IDOT, who we spoke with, keep in mind, these are design staff who doesn't get into the funding of it, how that's going to impact later if you come back and say, oh, by the way, 10 years, 15 years from now, we need some more money to do the intersection. How's that going to be perceived? I can't answer that question.
Right.
So if I'm understanding the memo correctly, there are two options. One, the staff does not recommend, the second, the staff does recommend. But the actual construction project that would have to be begun by 2020 is we could do as little as or as much as from south of the railroad tracks down to Pine Street. And that's all we have to commit to today. And I just want to make sure I'm clear on that before I vote. That's, because all I care about is making sure we get the maximum amount of money from the state right now to cover the maximum amount of road and interfere at the least with that intersection.
My other concern is something that you brought up. And that is, you know, they said, yeah, sure, we will do an exception for the right-hand turn lane for this set of plans. But if we don't do that, if we submit these and submit it without the right-turn lane, they've already consented to a, you know, to an exception for that.
That's correct.
But there's no saying that if we don't do that, the next time we come to them, whenever that is, when we come up with plans, they're going to say, nope, sorry, you need to have right-turn lanes now. There's no guarantee that they're not going to do that.
But that's, well, it's possible because if you go, if you wait 10 years, maybe you come back and all of a sudden, you're looking at 2050 traffic, not 2040 traffic, right? So now all of a sudden, you're looking at more traffic.
Right. So my question is, if we have engineering where it has been signed off on.
They could change it at any point. So.
Typically, they haven't. In projects, I haven't seen that, them do that too often. Now, we did incorporate what we call ESR, environmental survey request or areas. So we looked at it as if you're putting the right-turn lanes in from an environmental perspective. And that's what really gets hung up later is, hey, you didn't look outside the, your footprint didn't include this area. So from an environmental perspective, you have to come back and look at it outside this limit. And that's when it gets a little more confusing. But if they give us the stamp set of plan or stamp report that says design approval approved, I think you'd have a good argument to come back and say, well, why'd that change? We had the approval here, given 10 years makes a difference in traffic, too. So it depends on when you do that. depends on when you do that.
So, so this is federal money, Mr. Mayor? Eighteen, the 1.8 million? So does IDOT have jurisdiction over federal money?
Yep.
They do, okay.
Go through them.
Anybody else have any comments?
Just one, that Mark Uwer couldn't be here tonight, but he expressed support for making any and all improvements to the intersection area. So just wanted to make sure his opinion was shared.
And just, is, you know, I think there was some concern over the schedule and being able to get the funding used in time. Just for the record, one of the things on our presentation here is if we go with doing the intersection, if you guys decide, hey, let's do the intersection part instead of doing the south section, dealing with the ICC and the railroad and the right-of-way take that's going to happen at that intersection could put us beyond the timeframe, something to take into consideration.
And that's why I think we consider the whole location, but only do from the railroad track south.
Well, I, I agree with Alan on that. I just wanted to make sure I understood the whole concept, but you know.
I guess I, I get what I think IDOT wants from this is they don't, they want us to not ignore that intersection when we're doing the rest of the road.
I just, I just don't want to be held to...
Okay.
So from what...
I have a question. So, so to go without doing the right, right turn lanes, we're getting approval for the whole project, but we're just looking at, at doing south of there on, you know, to, down to Pine Street. At a later date, say, you know, several years, maybe some, there's some, some other change in that area, right lanes could be considered again.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so my, my point is, and I think you, you were talking about this, Scott, that if we can get the approval to not have the right lanes, because that seems to be the exception, it will give us the most options in the future.
Well, Tyce talked about the benefits of 24 seconds of having right turn lanes, so I guess you guys need to make a decision of whether that's, 24 seconds is enough for the impact and the cost to acquire some of the businesses, the parking and everything along this corridor.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just looking at, it could be the most options open.
Yeah. Well, you have to put the right turn lanes, that's the biggest footprint, that's your, that's the biggest, right? So you could do that, you could go that route, but you couldn't, I think, you couldn't come back later and say, we don't want to put right turn lanes in.
Yeah.
Because you've already...
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is go without the right hand turn lanes and then later we could have the option of saying, yeah, we wanted to...
Worst case scenario is...
Whereas if we went the other way, they could say, well, now you, you really have to have the right turn.
That's correct. If you approve it with the right turn lanes, it'd be hard pressed for them to come back and say, yeah, you can do it without, because they've already given you a design approval without them. Now, another thing that the ICC threw out when we, when we met with them is the possibility of some sort of a, a funding through them. Now, I'm not sure what the strings are attached to that or what kind of requirements, we didn't explore that, but they did, they did put that out there. But they usually want something in return.
Dave?
The option of going with right turn lanes versus not, when you go to the next stage, if we were to say, let's go with the whole cabana, you know, that, let's get as much right of way as we can, we can always reduce it and scale later on down the road if we want to. How much of a cost impact is there in the design engineering if you were to go with the full scale, right turn lanes, center median, the whole stop, the whole, whole deal?
As far as engineering perspective?
Yeah, what, what you would have to do to go to the next, you know, to keep moving. In other words, are we going to be spending a hundred thousand dollars for something that we may not ever do just because we might want to?
Oh, for, for moving forward from today, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, if we design the entire intersection, you know, we, there's a, there's a separate contract that we'll have to have the city to do phase two or design engineering. We already have an agreement in place to do whatever you want on the study, so we can proceed with that. But a design to do the intersection, if, if we do just to the south sections, a lot, it's going to be less because the man hours that's going to take to deal with the railroad, the ICC and all the issues at the intersection will be a lot higher than just dealing with everything from south of the railroad tracks, because the coordination, that's where at the time it's going to be. And, and the design.
And you're going to have a lot, a lot of time chewed up on that where you're going to be getting close to your under construction, right? If you were to include that in the design.
Right, are you saying we, we can design the entire thing as a whole? We could.
What you would need to do to...
Right. We could, we could design the entire thing, but if we designed the entire thing, and Tyce helped me with this, would, would IDOT require us to build the whole thing if we had designed, if we submitted a set of plans that included everything? Would they, would they, yeah?
I don't want to, I don't want to make this too difficult. I guess what I'm looking at is, is are we crazy to be looking at including the full right turn lanes and the center median, the full, the full thing here, if it's going to cost us a lot of money to do something that we're not going to do?
Well, we still have, well, let me back up. We still have to look at the intersection one way or the other, whether it's going to be right turn lanes or not. So that time's already considered in the phase one report. So there's no additional engineering cost for that.
Okay.
That's already included to do the report, whether you put right turn lanes in or not. To do this, to do the actual design depends which, which project you pick. If you decide you want to do the intersection first and put all your money there, there's a contract and we can have another contract for the south section.
Okay. So if we do the south section, what I'm talking about doesn't really matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
We don't have to do the, the big right turn lane design, we can just do minor enhancements to the intersection.
Plan is not to do any work to the intersection. If we, if you just build from Pine to the railroad, we don't go stay away from there.
That's just part of the design, leave it as is.
That's right.
Okay.
I'm worried that if you touch it, they'll want you to own a lot more stuff.
Yeah. So you're looking for us to say, don't do the right turn lanes or do them?
Right. So I guess that's my question is, do we want to direct staff to go with their recommendation and not have the right-hand turn lanes? Or do we want the right-hand turn lanes?
I would say leave out the right-hand turn lanes, just leave it as is.
Does anybody feel strongly about having the right-hand turn lanes?
No.
Okay. I just think the cost is too high, regardless of the dollars to build it, I think the cost is too high for everything else around that intersection.
Okay.
That's what we need.
We have one more clarification on which...
Yeah, so...
Go ahead.
So once we decided on that, there are two ways to spend that 1.8 million dollar federal money. One is to reconstruct the Prairie from Pine to pretty much railroad track, I'd say. And another is do the intersection improvement with the left turn lanes and maybe we'll have enough money left to do the resurfacing all the way to Pine. So you will, you will install the left turn lane at the intersection, do the railroad crossings, put the traffic signal on, and also grind and overlay the rest of the section all the way. I will also say that, that resurfacing will not last us lifetime. We'll probably be looking at anywhere between 10 to 15 years of life with some patching work and all that, but that's an option that we have. So there are two options and there is that third hybrid options that we are talking about. So, so it's, it's in front of you how you feel about doing intersection improvement, putting traffic signal, railroad crossings, do all that improvement plus resurfacing the rest of the Prairie Street, or you just reconstruct from railroad to Pine.
Clarification on reconstruct, what are we, what are we, what's the extent of our work if we do total reconstruct?
So it's pretty much doing all the curb work, pretty much doing all the sidewalk, putting in a shared bicycle traffic lane on both, both direction.
Are we doing any work to the storm sewer, sanitary water?
Yes, those, water main, storm and all that stuff.
And we'd be pulling out the, the asphalt and...
Yes.
And putting in a, a correct amount of stone.
Right. And storm sewer work. I don't believe the water main work is included. I think the water main is relatively new, right Gary? Yeah, I, I think that's, that's, that's what I remember.
And you probably can't answer this question right now until you go through further design, but do you know if the storm sewer would be increased in size or is, is that something you're going to have to evaluate still?
We actually have done a preliminary study on what they call a location drainage study. And the trunk lane, the trunk line that's there now will remain, but all the side stingers that kind of come in from the inlets will be all new and upgraded in size appropriately. We, based on our study, the trunk line there now is adequate based on size. There's some condition issues that we still need to explore during the phase two, but that's our recommendation as of right now.
How big is the trunk line?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know.
How do you know it's adequate?
Because we found a study to show that it is, I just don't have the study with me right now.
Okay, so...
I can get that for you.
So is it adequate for a 10-year flood or a 100-year flood?
Do you know? Storm sewer, the storm sewer designed for 10 years, I'm, I'm a traffic guy, I'm a storm sewer guy, but...
I got a problem with that.
What's that?
I have a problem with that.
Well, I understand. 10 years.
All right. So we know, again, I mean, everyone's heard me say this.
Right.
Global warming is upon us, climate change is upon us, just look out your window and it's always raining. Look at the storms coming at, at North Carolina right now. There's tons of water falling on us every year.
Right.
Okay? The 10-year model is gone. And so we can't keep using the 10-year model. I know engineers argue with me about that, but I'm just a guy who sees the water and the people are negatively affected in the city of Batavia. And I just don't want them negative, negatively effective if we're going to be going into the ground and doing open cuts. I'd like to upgrade the system so it takes the water away without negatively affecting our residents.
You have an engineer that's about to jump in.
This is also some of that bank run gravel in this area, so it kind of goes along with the College of Wilson that we're doing, that we have it designed for what's appropriate and we've monitored the area. Scott Haynes had input on this as well and reviewed the report. And we'll be looking at all the borings as well to make sure that there is adequate infiltration because it's so close to the river. But it's also looking at it from an economic standpoint as well if there's that infiltration. Naturally, there's no need to oversize the storm sewer if it's doing its job. Obviously, we have to meet the minimum requirements and I know you always want to do everything for the 100-year, but when there's natural occurring benefits, we're looking at those as well.
And infiltration you're saying is basically storm water going through the, the soil, the whatever's there.
Right, and getting down.
Okay. And I, and I understand that if you can work in tandem with the natural, the natural conveyance...
That we have right now out there on college.
The natural conveyance and the structured conveyance that we put in, if they work together to convey the water, I'm all for it. But I just don't want to put in a 10-year system that doesn't convey the water.
We don't either. I guess you're going to come back to us and go, why is it not draining?
We're on the same page.
Marty?
What's the, what's the lifespan of the reconstruction then?
It's by tombness, we're talking what, 30 years?
So, so if you, yeah, if you, if you keep grind and resurface and, and, and maintain it, like with crack fill and every 20 years, if you grind it and resurface, you can get, you know, anywhere between 40 to 50 years. I mean, most of the streets that you are driving on, they are probably 50 years old or so. So if, it, it depends on how good you are maintaining the street. If you're not maintaining, you're probably not going to get that much.
And when you talk, the other option where to...
Grind and overlay.
Grind and it's a 10 to 15-year lifespan? At that lifespan, you have to reconstruct or can you grind and...
That's right. So, so the existing pavement has concrete underneath and it was overlaid at some point, I, I don't remember when. So all the carb that is out there, it's been overlaid with two years, with two inches of asphalt. I did, we did do some patching last year on that stretch of road. And when we took out four inches of existing pavement, we observed that the concrete underneath is not in best, best shape. So if you, when we, when we talk about grind and overlay, it's almost waking up the, the beast out there, you know? You, we might grind and, and you might find that the street just went south all the way and, you know, so that may happen, but if, if, if everything, and we'll have to do some engineering to that, we'll, we'll probably take some cores, you know, test out some areas, see whether it's even appropriate for a grind and overlay. And Kelly's just right next to me and he's saying 10 to 15 years might be, might be a, a stretch, you know, on those type of streets. But I have seen, you know, I have grinded and overlaid some streets with heads, they call it pause base, that was in, back in 80s, those, that was a very popular base course, you know, people put it in. But it has the, it has the affinity for water. So it, it collects water and during the winter time, it actually freezes and it expands. So I have seen the street go up by four, five inches. So, you know, I mean, I have, we were thinking of reconstructing it, but we overlaid it or grind and overlay again, and we have got another 15 years out of it, you know? So every, every winter it goes up by five inches. The residents love it because their, their driveway is now more like a depressed driveway, like, you know, they don't feel the bump because they're going from the street to their driveway, but it comes down again during the summer. It lasted, you know, but we were pretty close to make a decision of reconstructing it. So, you know, some of the things are more, you know, I guess, art and engineering combined. So we'll, we'll, if we decide to do intersection plus resurfacing, we'll have to come up with either funding or some, some kind of a mechanism of reconstructing it within next 10, 15 years. We have to plan for it. We cannot just say, let's resurface and forget about it.
Nick, I think a good example would be, I think to what you're asking, would be if you drove down Batavia Avenue or Route 31 this last summer when they resurfaced that last year and before they did it, that what's underneath of what they grind off is falling apart. So after a time, I mean, it has a life expectancy. So if we do that on Prairie Street, sure, you can do that. And then in 12 years, you, you can maybe do it again, but it's going to get to a point that what's underneath of there. And, and in the meantime, now you wasted all this money on resurface, 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 where that's why if you go in and do a total reconstruct, it's going to last you that 50, 60 years, you know, where you got to do a wear surface every 15, 20 years or 18 years, something like that, which is the grind and overlay, so.
I, I, not to be cynical, it's your industry and it behooves you to get the full restructure. And that's what I always have to question.
I'm going to retire, so I don't care.
I'm not saying you're even getting this, but I always, I, I just wanted to compare it. I wasn't trying to sway one way or another, but he gave the lifespan on the one, but didn't mention it on the other and I just wanted to...
Yeah. And the other thing with the total reconstruct is you're upgrading and rebuilding your infrastructure that's underneath of it.
Right.
You're not just doing your road base that you're driving on, you're, you know, you're taking care of your infrastructure that is 100 years old.
Marty?
So in order to kind of draw this in, the intersection worthwhile project, going south worthwhile project, but the major part of this is time is money. We don't want to put the chance of losing the funding. So the best bang for the buck at this time would be to do from Prairie down to the train track and that's it. You've got everything done, you've seen the greatest amount of improvement overall. The other one's going to need more time, it's more complex, and it would be better to go into that, thinking those things a little more further, seeing what's going on, and then try to find, if possible, some additional funding for that intersection. So my vote's for that. My vote's for the full...
Full reconstruct.
Reconstruct from the train track down.
And I think Prairie Street has been bad for a long time. I mean, the same type of thing, I constantly get comments on Main Street, when is that finally going to get done? I mean, that's been pretty much the whole time I've been on the council, I've been asked that question, when is Main Street going to finally be rebuilt? And, you know, that's the same holds true with Prairie. I mean, it needs to be done. And, you know, that's the same holds true with Prairie. I mean, it needs to be done.
Keep in mind, I mean, there's always that guy behind the curtain. You know, there's going to be some things that come up, as will be on Main Street, where there's maybe some trees that have to be removed, that people are going to say, oh my God, how could you remove those trees? But when you do a total reconstruct, it's right away to right away.
So, if we do the total reconstruct, we should all be aware that, you know, obviously, maintenance comes into that. Proper maintenance to keep it for 50 years. And so, we need to, as Gary's telling us, and Rahat tells us, we need to have a program for maintenance. So, every three years, whatever, you seal it, whatever it is, but we need to start looking into maintenance. It's pennies on the dollar, and so. Reconstruct.
Ellen?
Okay. I guess at this point, we don't need to vote on anything tonight. We just know the direction we're going to go rebuild or reconstruct the street and wait on the intersection. Pretty good with that?
So, with that direction, do we see any problems on being under construction by October 2020?
No.
Do you think it could even be 2019? What do you...
I think it'll be probably spring of 2020. We have to take some right away, and to kind of piggyback on what you said about people complaining about their driveways. There are some driveways that are pretty steep, they're not in good shape, meaning approaches, not necessarily the entire driveway. Approaches and the sidewalk. We will have to correct some of that, and there are some temporary easements we'll have to get. So, we'll need some time to get the temporary easements to make that happen. But the finished product will be really nice.
Very good.
Look forward to that.
Okay, Ellen, you good?
Yep.
Thank you.
I was looking forward to it.
Okay, next is item number nine, ordinance 18-57, amending the official zoning map for the city of Batavia, 750 through 812 Main Street. Alderman Stark?
I've got it. So, at the last city council meeting, we were set to vote on what we had discussed the previous town meeting. And it was asked by the alderman of that ward to please take it off the agenda so that there could be further discussion with business owners and property owners in their ward. And so, this has come back to us now, and we have some additional alternatives. And Joel can speak to what his thoughts are on this, and Marty and Ellen, if you'd like to chime in. So, let's start with Joel, and Joel can talk about how this reads and what he's recommending. And then you guys can talk about what you've heard on the street.
Okay, thank you. The ordinance that's in front of you this evening reads precisely as it was presented to the COW on August 28th, which the COW voted to recommend approval of. What the COW can do this evening is to not take any further action, thus leaving the ordinance as recommended for approval, which if the city council approves it, it would amend the zoning map to apply the community commercial district. If the COW wants to take a different approach, the COW can reconsider its recommendation of August 28th and come up with a new recommendation. New recommendation could be to apply the neighborhood commercial district. There could be a recommendation to still apply the community commercial district, but at the same time, you can direct staff to begin a process to propose amendments to the allowed uses in the community commercial district that have been brought up as potentially being an issue in this particular area. But you would have to keep in mind that anything we do to amend allowed uses in the community commercial district would affect all community commercial zone properties in the city. So, you have a couple of different options this evening. You also have the opportunity to change your recommendation to not make any change at this time. That was the recommendation by the Plan Commission, to not make any change in the zoning districts and to leave it as it is currently zoned, which is light industrial.
Okay, thank you. Marty, Ellen, do you have anything that you want to say about this?
Yeah, so I pulled it off because this obviously came up pretty fast through the process. And there was a lot of questions I was hearing from people, and just a wide variety of opinions. I know there was the compromise with the property owners. But then there's surrounding property owners, there's residential around there that either they didn't know enough about it, or they had wide varying opinions about what they thought this meant, what they thought that meant. Since this was a city initiated, there's nothing pressing that needed to be done on it. Due to the confusion and due to kind of the misunderstandings or the varying opinions on it, it just needed to wait for two more weeks to get some little better idea of what those that are directly affected by that neighborhood are thinking and understanding. The, what I walked away is, there's still some that want to do nothing. The overwhelming amount of people that I did talk to are, just don't keep it light industrial anymore. It was what it was years ago, and if we're considering changing that neighborhood to begin with, it's no longer the edge of town, so that section should not be light industrial. That's what the surrounding homeowners were saying, not all of them, some. Others immediately went to, I want it to be neighborhood commercial. And when you explain the differences between the two, and the discussions of some of the text amendments that could go into effect, people were then moved towards, oh, well, then I'm okay with community commercial. If some of these other text amendments could go in, such as some types of businesses, because even on that, some people don't have problems with tattoo shops, but other people do. So, I think a public hearing on that would be beneficial, just to see what people are thinking on that part of it. Just the same with the other major thing that came out was the business hours, going from 6 to 11 in neighborhood commercial versus 24 in commercial. Again, varying opinions, because some people don't care if it's 24. If it's a business, they wouldn't mind going to 24. So, it's still kind of catch 22. And I think those would be better suited for having those held out at a public hearing, giving direction to have the Plan Commission take the public hearing, look through those things, which may be acceptable for those areas, and make the changes. With those things being considered, more people were generally in support of community commercial at that point, so that they could have that, they felt it was a nice balance between the compromise. And that was where I was talking to Mr. Link's attorney, Susan, about this earlier. The part of it being that area by itself is all we should be concerned about at that part. Any potential rezoning for anything else in that area, I think should be discussed with the property owners north of there first, before we put up any signs, before we figure out what we're doing and the different impacts that may or may not happen with north of Main Street. So, I would just like staff to discuss with the property owners in that area that if we're thinking about making any changes to anything, we have those conversations beforehand.
Ellen, did you have anything to add?
Pretty much the same comments as Marty got from several people that I talked to. I think the overwhelming majority understand that to try to take an area that's been industrial or light industrial for almost its entirety, and to change it into something else, there are going to be some people that aren't happy. Oh, well, there could be a tattoo shop there, or there could be 24-hour business there, or whatever might end up being there. So, I do think that there is some validity in having a review of some of the things that are allowed in community commercial. But I think that's also the best compromise solution for the property owners that are there, so that they have, I guess, the widest berth of things that could go into that area to revitalize the properties that they have, or to make them valuable to sell if they want to turn the property over or change it, that, you know, I don't want to restrict things down to the point where we don't get something to happen in there. I mean, I said it a couple of times, part of that property has really been a nice sore in that area for years. And so, if there's a way that we can induce things to happen by changing the zoning on, I think is really important, especially along that area. I do think that it's going to remain somewhat commercial, both the north side and the south side on that section of Main Street. I think unless you were to put it all together in one big redevelopment and level it and start over, I don't think you're going to get anything huge change there. But this, to me, gives the best opportunities for the separate buildings and separate parcels that are there.
Quick question, going back to, there was an original public hearing for this, correct? And only two, I think I remember, maybe two property owners came out and actually spoke at the public hearing?
Property owners, I believe there were only two, yes.
And Plan Commission said they didn't want to deal with it, just leave it as light industrial, because there was no decisive reason at that moment to make a change?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was still clear on that. And then, so then Marty and Ellen now have talked to property owners, and we're still in this gray area because of the uses and the hours, whether it's community commercial or...
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood commercial. Okay, just, I just want to make sure, because when you were talking about it, I wasn't 100% sure what direction you were ending up in. So, that's why I was like, I want to make sure I'm on the same page here.
No, I'm just giving the update on what, talking with more people. Because initially, to your point, why only two people showed up, a lot of people didn't know what stuff means. So, if they don't know what stuff means, and it's moving fast, and they haven't had the ability to kind of digest it, and remember, it's also Labor Day weekend, people aren't paying attention to it. So, since it was a city initiated, and you had some people come out to begin with, and you also know the people around that area are going to have something to say about it, and they do, and that's where you got to give them a little bit of time to digest, this is what this means, this is what this means, this is what can be done, this is what can't be done. When they have a better idea, then they're going towards the, they can understand the respect for the actual people that own the property there, knowing that they should be allowed to do something. But they also have concerns, valid concerns too, for their property values and what would affect their property values. Because the overall comprehensive plan is to do something that complements and transitions well as a neighborhood for today and the future, and respect everybody's property rights and values.
Lucy?
Can you remind me how we came about, I don't remember the conversation, was there ever a comparison between neighborhood commercial and community commercial? In picking that out, I don't remember ever discussing it. I mean, we just kind of went to community commercial, I mean, neighborhood commercial, without a lot of discussion as to which zoning classification we would recommend?
No, we had a chart of what...
We did?
Yeah, it was in the last memorandum. It laid out specifically community commercial and...
Originally, did we go through both of them originally? I mean, way back when we approved this whole thing?
No, and that, to your point, that's exactly why I was saying there might be some concern and confusion for people, because the talk initially, as it was left during the TIF discussions and the TIF planning, was neighborhood commercial.
So, but how did we get to that initially? Like, way back when, when we set up the TIF district? Why did we select neighborhood commercial over community commercial?
It was a process where we did go to the neighbors early. And there is about a year later, after having initial meetings with the neighbors in this room, we had proposed a neighborhood commercial feeling at that time, without receiving direct input from, or without having the proposition of exactly individual businesses that can and can't go in there. The frontage was, the Main Street frontage was looked at as a development opportunity. And at that time, the neighborhood commercial was picked as one potential zoning district. It was identified as being a neighborhood commercial land use category in the comprehensive plan, land use map, and the TIF redevelopment area. Additionally, on that same frontage, there was another zoning district of mixed use put on there. So, there were two potential zoning districts, future zoning districts for that area.
So, we never really considered community commercial?
Correct, there was no real consideration for community commercial.
So, no one said, no, we're not, we don't want this, because it wasn't really considered, I guess, at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
And the community commercial came up after speaking with the property owners?
Right, I got that part, but I just couldn't remember initially, way back when we set up the TIF.
First, Dan.
I'm curious, did you guys have discussions with neighbors that were specific? What types of businesses are they afraid of, and what types of businesses would they like to see go there? Is a diner okay? Is a 7-Eleven okay? What do they want to see go up in that neighborhood?
Well, it was just when they were given the option for things, well, a lot of people...
What's their vision?
A lot of people want a brewery, or something that they can walk to, a place where they can congregate, and those type of things. It's going to be age-specific too. Some people do not mind a tattoo parlor, some people do. It just goes to changing attitudes. The one that's the definite no is the pawn shop, because everybody's like, I can't see that in my neighborhood.
Then let's address pawn shops as a city, if that's what we want to do. That was my concern, that we were clouding this issue.
And that's one of the things, I didn't have a problem with passing this when we had it come before us, because we had already stated that we wanted to talk about the things that were allowed in community commercial, and we'll come back and amend that.
I'm sorry.
Ellen, you had more? It's gone right out of your head.
Yeah, I got into another...
Susan, I just have a point that I'd like to make, that while, it's not a very pressing issue, but we have had concerns that at any time, a light industrial user could come into one of these properties right now. So, while it is zoned light industrial, that could happen tomorrow, and then we'd be stuck with a light industrial use there.
And I think we missed the, I don't want to bash the school board, but we missed the opportunity to get this whole area into a classification like this before the school district moved in there. You know, and so then you don't have the opportunity to put those properties together and really have something change in the neighborhood. I remember what I was going to say. I remember when this first came up a couple of weeks ago, I went back and read some of the stuff that went through when we did the TIF, and why we looked at some of the districts that we did. And part of, I think, the reason why to go with the neighborhood commercial was it expanded the envelope, because your setbacks were different on neighborhood commercial versus community commercial. And one of the things that several of the neighbors, especially along the actual frontages to those where their houses, was they preferred the community district, because it kept them further away from their properties. So, that was one of the reasons why they thought that was a better fit for the neighborhood, for a buffer.
Marty?
Yeah, and that's why, so to your question about which one I support, it would be the community commercial, based on what everybody's saying. But Lucy brings up a good point about the, when we were talking about this initially. And that's where the initial confusion lies, is when this came to us, this is a city-initiated one. So, the last information that we had in discussions on it were the creation of the TIF, which talked about the vision of it being a neighborhood commercial. But I know business owners here were told at that time, well, don't worry, because we will still go through the discussion of those changes at a later date. So, thereby, they could still have a say. This came up, where the city is now initiating something south of there. And while the property owners are in agreement with community commercial, I don't know what that is for the north side, and that's why I'm saying staff needs to talk with the property owners on the north side, and not set precedent of, we're going to do this down here, and we're going to do the same thing on the north side, without having discussions about the unique circumstances on that side of the road for consistency and for transparency. That's my suggestion.
Okay. I'm still not 100% sure what you want, Marty. I mean...
Talk with the people on the north side of the road, and we can change the zone, no, not first.
Okay, well, that's what I was...
We can change the zoning on the south side to community commercial. But going further, anything, any other discussions of rezoning in that area, talk with the neighbors, talk with the property owners first. So, we avoid some of this, people don't know what's going on, some people have misconceptions. Address it beforehand, prior communication goes a long way.
If I could clarify, when you say talk to property owners, when there is a notice of a public hearing sent to a property owner, that should be sufficient for them to be invited to the discussion?
I'm saying, any parcels that were actually considering changing, talk to them first. Not necessarily the other ones around it, but if we're going to say, we're changing your property...
I think we invite them to the public hearing.
We do typically try to reach out to the property owners. I might not have done it in every instance, but we do try to reach out to the property owners to say, you know, here's something we're thinking about before we get into the hearing process, because of that exact reason, so.
And that's where I'm saying a specific request from talking to property owners in that area is if we're thinking about anything, talk with them.
So, anything in the area, we should talk, how far does the net go?
TIF district area.
If Dave Beckman's property is going to be rezoned, have a conversation with him before the sign goes up. That's all I'm saying. Just give him the courtesy, it's his property, let's have a conversation, that's it. So that we're not fighting, and just not knowing anything beforehand, where Dave...
You need to come up to the mic, Dave.
Dave just wants to have conversations about his property.
Dave Beckman, I own property at 709 Main Street, right across the street from this one. I really don't have an issue with anything that, what those guys are doing with their stuff. I guess I have a bigger... I guess I have a bigger issue with process. When the whole TIF thing was going on and there was discussion about changing the proposed use of this land and I was told several times, calm down, Mr. Beckman, nobody's changing the zoning on your property. Just sit down, it's fine. Any, the only, how it was actually said was, I believe it was, the only one that can request a zoning change on your property is you. Now I see this, I talk to these guys across the street a little bit and I say, did you initiate this? No, we didn't do it. So now I figure out the city initiated this zoning change. So I wonder if this happens over here and just because they go along with it, that's all fine, it's their deal, I don't care. But if they can do it over there, then they, now all of a sudden, it just kind of swallows me up and says, we're going to do this with the zoning on your property. We understand your grandfathered in, you can do whatever you want forever and ever, as long as you do it. But the taste is still there and the sentiment is still there is, I was told one thing, that only I can initiate a change in the zoning, yet exactly the opposite is happening right across the street. And as far as I know, correct me if I'm wrong, neither one of those guys initiated anything. Whether they agreed to it, different story all in itself. But it was brought to them as, this is what we're doing. And it was up to them to fight back, the way I understand it. So I don't, I just don't think it's right and it leaves a bad, just a kind of uneasy feeling in my gut when I go to bed at night, what can happen to me tomorrow? That's what I want to just kind of head off and kind of address, I'm just rambling now, so. I think I made my point, that's what I want for you guys. If you have nothing to say about it, it's all staff, then I guess my complaint is with them. I don't know, I guess that's up to me to figure that out. But that was my concern, that was my concern I had with Marty. I think that's what he's been getting at for a while. It's there, I just didn't know when was appropriate for me to speak up, so there it is.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
And Joel, can you address that when it does come to a change of zoning? Could the city come to my house tomorrow and say, I want to rezone your house as light industrial?
Yes, well, not your, we could say we want to rezone it. Hopefully, the jurisdiction would propose something that is in line with an adopted plan for the municipality. But yes, a municipality can rezone a private property owner's property. With or without that property owner's consent.
And that's in line with, in this area, in this case, the proposed TIF district and then the follow-through of the TIF district, is the rezoning that goes along with this plan development?
Generally, yes. Proposing the neighborhood, or as the ordinance is written with proposing the community commercial, it is generally in line with what was envisioned with the west town focus plan and with the TIF plan.
Okay, thank you, Lucy.
So regarding the owners not being the only ones able, they could continue to use their building as they are using it and that we were not going to change the zoning. Would does that, I mean, Mr. Beckman said that he was told that the zoning would not be changed for him. I'm assuming that meant for his using it and then once he sold it.
I don't think his property is part of this.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
So it wouldn't be included in the notice that you're talking about.
He's in the second street. But wasn't he originally in the TIF?
He is in the TIF.
He is in the TIF.
He is not part of 750 through 812 Main Street.
And is it mixed, but what is his zoning in the TIF?
He's still industrial.
He is still industrial, okay, I'm sorry.
Any changes to his property.
Okay, got it, right.
The only ones are on the south side, so.
Okay, okay, so.
We can, someday we can do that without his participation.
So city council has adopted some plans for this area prior to this coming to city council. And the changes that are being proposed are consistent with those plans.
Dan?
We have done this before. I remember near Funway, there were some heavy industrial properties. We put notice out to the property owners, we tried to water down some of those industrial uses. We sent a notice out to the property owners and some of them were cool with it and other ones had some problems with it and we went through public hearing process.
And more recently, we, the city initiated and council completed the rezoning of a couple of properties on Mallory, just north of here.
But it doesn't sound like we're doing anything different than what our process is.
No, but what we did, and what we did on River Street, I believe, Dan, is we went from general industrial to light industrial. And there were some people there who did not want us to do that, like there was a chemical company.
Oh, yeah.
And said, hey, wait, you're going to kill us. And so we said, okay, we're going to work around him and then he moved out of town. But we did make efforts to keep him general industrial. And so, I mean, I guess we would, in that, with that, in that spirit, with Mr. Beckman's property, we could make some, some.
But we don't currently have any designs on his.
We have no designs on it now anyway. But we can make accommodations to accommodate his property.
Okay.
Marty?
Is that true, Joel?
Where you're not proposing any changes?
Right, right, not with this action.
Not with this action.
And before we would propose anything, as Aldrin Callahan had informed us to do, we would be in contact with Mr. Beckman about what we may be thinking before we actually initiate the rezoning process.
And that's not a problem for us to do that. I mean, we can certainly sit down with the property owners and talk to them about it before we file for a formal zoning change.
Okay, Marty?
Yeah, my, that's my whole point of this is that we have a put, just because we can and just because we haven't had this problem here or there, I'm letting you know there is a concern for one of the neighbors whose property is not affected, but he's asking for the city council and the city to have a conversation with him before it comes to him. And I don't think that that is out of line with anything, just to hear him out beforehand about his property because then you can, as was happened on this one, we're not, the property owners for the ones that we're changing aren't fighting that one, they're actually in agreement with being okay about the community commercial. Let's have that same opportunity beforehand. And that was where all of this just got dialed back, that I was hearing way too much conflicting. It's better to pull it out, have the discussions with people, allay their concerns, discuss, talk, and then come back and say, okay, community commercial's fine for the parcel that's south, just like Dave's saying, it doesn't affect me, but when you come over to my side of the street, talk with me first. Let's have the conversation beforehand.
I just don't understand why we pulled it from the agenda for what seems to be a side issue, so.
It is, but it isn't because we're talking about redeveloping a neighborhood. I want to make sure that when we're redeveloping the neighborhood, the neighbors are involved in that.
Okay.
True.
So that, I just, when you say that, it's the neighbors. And I think we're conflating two issues, which is rezoning a particular property owner's property. Are we contacting neighbors or are we contacting the property owner?
The property owner, I think is the one we should.
Okay.
I want to back up and say, I think that the process did what it's supposed to do.
Yes.
During that, it was proposed to go to neighborhood commercial. The property owners came in and said, we don't like that, it's too restrictive and we compromised and we went to community commercial. So the process works. Not everybody is happy with the processes that we have. Sorry, but that's what it is. If you don't like it, get on the council and change it. The reality is, the public notices are given, the letters are mailed out, people show up that want to have, that want to say something to, the rest of them sit home on Facebook and cry about it. So at this point, I think we're doing what we're supposed to do. And I think Marty and I wanted to be more at peace with this before it went through because there were questions. And there were some things that people didn't understand because they weren't part of it. They just saw something on Facebook and decided this is a problem. So we're trying to react to some of that. I think sometimes we do too much of that, but I also wanted to say, I think the process works. Because if it didn't, we'd have the two property owners here today screaming about it still. So I think the reality is, is that the process worked and I think going forward, it just takes a little bit more communication upfront to make it, make sure that people get involved in it.
Drew, did you have something, you had your hand up, didn't you?
I did, but.
You're done?
Yep.
You have no more to add to this conversation? Does anyone else have anything to say?
Sure, I'd like to make the motion.
Oh, wait, timeout. Because we have some options here, so obviously, we can.
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, for sure.
Yes.
You know what you're making a motion on?
To approve, to recommend the council to approve ordinance 18-57, amending the official zoning map of the city of Batavia, 750 through 812 Main Street, city of Batavia applicant. And basically, that's going to have it changed to community commercial. We are also going to have a discussion and set forth the process to change whatever comes out of the plan commission meetings and the public hearings of what is allowed in community commercial. So I want to make sure that got stated, that's not part of my motion, but that has to be stated so people are aware of that, that that is something that this change has prompted us to look at some of the things that are in that. And it's not just for this property. When you look at everything that's in there and think of some of the other places we have zoned community commercial, there's things that really I don't think belong there.
I was just going to mention that it has been voted upon in a previous committee of the whole move forward to city council. I don't think you have to vote on it again.
We don't, and just, Alan, just to make sure, as written, right?
As written.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No change to it.
Okay, so that goes back to going on the city, the next city council meeting?
Perfect.
Okay, cool.
All right, next three items, item 10, 11, and 12 are resolution 1805, 1806, and 18107, which all have to do with Deer Path Road and Main Street intersection.
Hey, we could spend more money on a street that everybody talks about forever.
By October.
Yeah, by October 2020, this has to be done. This is, you want to just go ahead and start?
Sure. This is Deer Path and Main intersection, much anticipated in a way to traffic signal improvement there. We are going to be widening the intersection to get a right turn lane from the northbound Deer Path onto Main Street. And we were looking at potentially doing construction this year, but just due to the timing of it, we did not want to have staged construction over the winter and then land acquisition. Kind of, that took a little longer than anticipated, as was mentioned earlier with Prairie Street. So as of now, we currently have all the parcels under ownership. And we're moving forward to the November 9th letting. Agreements for the construction engineering need to be into IDOT shortly. And as also mentioned, we got STP funds for this and for this upcoming stage. The city has been the lead on the preliminary engineering and the design engineering for Phase 1 and 2. And once we go to construction, the county is actually going to be the lead for that while the city maintains the lead on the resident engineer, construction engineering. So in order to get all the, our ducks in a row, we had to update our IGA, which we've had one for each of the previous phases, and state that who's responsible. So I'm not sure which one that is in this packet of stuff, but the IGA then states the city is going to be upfront in paying for the construction engineering, which we will then be reimbursed by IDOT. And then that we will pay the, and then also that KDOT will be reimbursing us out of the, it's a 75-25, so the city and KDOT are responsible for 25% of the local share. And out of that 25, each are paying 12 and 1/2%. So KDOT will reimburse the city and then KDOT will be upfronting the money for the construction engineer, or the construction of the project and the city reimbursing them. And that gets billed by the state a little bit later on in the process, so we will be paying for that. I do have in this memo, the amounts of money that are for each of those phases. And so the IGA just kind of states those prerequisites. And as part of that, this last phase, the city acquired all the property in our name, just to simplify the process with the land acquisition agency. And we are in the process of transferring the property on Main Street to the county, working with Kevin Drellnall and Scott Buning, and we're going to get that to bring back as well as accepting all those properties. And then doing what we need to on the properties on Deer Path. We have one, I think, temporary and the rest are permanent takes on the right of way there. So that is also included in this IGA to make sure that all that is completed since it's been a change since the previous agreement. So that covers that. Then we have our resident engineer, that is V3. We went through the QBS process on the selection of that and they will be, they have submitted the agreement. We have it in IDOT for review right now. So the resolution does state that there may be revisions and slight modifications after IDOT reviews it to make sure that all their numbers and hours match up in a reasonable fashion. And then the last agreement is stating that we, the city, have supplied the sufficient funds to pay for the construction engineering for the federal participation, which construction engineering is the $207,432, which we pay upfront and get reimbursed 75% by the state and then the 12 and 1/2 by KDOT. So that is a synopsis of all three of these items, 1805, 1806, which were chosen in January when we thought we were going to move forward earlier in this year, and then 18107. Any questions?
Anybody having comments, questions, Dave?
Did you have to get any property from the owner of the northwest corner, Salsi?
Yes.
And that's been done?
Yes.
I don't know whatever happened to the southwest corner that used to be owned by Camille Hoffman. What did she ever do with that whole corner?
It is currently up for sale, I've seen it listed. But through the property acquisition, it's under trustee ownership and they're out of Virginia. That's all I know from looking at the titles that we've gotten.
So she, there will be still some private ownership on that corner?
Yes. I mean, it's a buildable lot, but with the flood plain there, it makes the space limited. And so this will also include bike paths and sidewalks going across the intersection as well and continuing them from the bridge where we left off and crossing all across the whole frontage of Main Street going to the east.
And then the stoplight itself, is that going to be linked or synchronized, whatever you want to call it, with Main Street? How does it work?
Unfortunately, when we did the original PDR, which is that first phase, we did not go far enough to link it to where all the wiring left off for Main Street. But we will be putting it as far as we can. And then there are provisions in the plans to have all the necessary items for that interconnect. And then the county will look into that at a future date.
So this looks like it's going to be a next year project and would it be completed in one year?
That is the goal. Like I said, we did not start it this year, push it to a letting right around now because it will be staged, there'll be three stages where they're going to be pushing the traffic to the northbound lanes, southbound lanes, and I'm not sure if that's the right direction. But it'll be on Main Street first and then it'll be, still maintain the same no-stop signs or anything on Main Street. And then, once we have those lanes, then they'll go off to Deer Path and do the improvements on Deer Path.
Well, the last thing I've got is the same speech I always try to give when it comes to putting things out for bid and that is, try to get it out in February, March because that's when you're going to get your best prices.
Well, this is a state let.
That's right, this isn't us, yeah.
Yeah, it goes November 9th to the state letting. So hopefully, that will get us in good gear so we can go out as soon as possible once the weather breaks in the spring.
Okay, anybody else? We'll start off with resolution 1805. Anybody want to make a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. That carries, put on the regular agenda so we can talk about it, it's a big project.
Yes, many people are asking too, so that would be great.
Okay, then you got resolution 1806, R.
One here to make a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Resolution 18-107, R.
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, and we'll be back once we have all those properties ready.
Item 14, discussion on the Main Street reconstruction design engineering plans.
Okay, one more. Carron's heading up here, this is Main Street, the other big giant project that we have.
This is Main Street, the other big giant project that we have to get done before 2020.
October.
October. This goes back, now, we had already talked, not the side of this street, Main Street, that we already approved the change on tonight, but the other side of the street and how we lay out sidewalks, driveway access, and everything, that was one of the things that stuck this, we talked about that earlier in January this year. Now that we have the plans completed, they're presenting them to us so that we can take a look at that and get everybody's comments on that tonight, so. You can just pull it up off the agenda and pull that plan up. While we're waiting for that, does anybody have any preliminary reactions to what was there, for how we're going to lay that, at least that section of the street out? Anybody in the audience have any comments on that? Okay. Trying to page through to find a picture myself. Everything else on the street from Davy Avenue West has all stayed the same as what we saw earlier this year, Rahat?
Yes, yes. I mean, as I said in the memo, I'm particularly bringing it back because the committee and mayor expressed interest to bring it back at preliminary, pre-final level, so that you can confirm that the sidewalk or the driveway is being depressed throughout those three properties that I talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to get to that page, I know it's page number 28.
28.
And I guess my eyesight is getting bad.
The print's just getting smaller.
Yeah. So you can see that at the Mallory intersection, the sidewalk starts, then it becomes a carriage walk, and this hatch line right here indicates that the curb is being depressed, so that this is like a giant driveway entrance, if you want to say, so people should be able to get in straight into those properties and then just park in front of the property. And that's what council gave us direction to do with these properties out there. So I'm bringing it back because that's what we are proposing and just wanted you to all see it. So we pretty much talked about all the three big projects today. It was kind of planned that way, because we are kind of coming to the home stretch now, because 2020, October is what we are looking at. Deer Path and Main is going to happen next year. Prairie, as we talked, it's January 2020 what we are looking at. Main Street, we are looking at next year. I also want to just tell you that we are currently in negotiation with the property owners to do the temporary easement. There is no permanent take on this project. Nobody's, we are not taking anybody's property. It's just temporary easement, because some sidewalks are currently now in the private property side, so we are reaching out to the residents to take those sidewalks out of their private property side and put it on the right-of-way side. So I'll just urge that if a resident reach out to you saying, "I'm being, you know, approached," that's all we are trying to do. And that's the, I would say, the white elephant out in the, in the room now, that how fast that temporary easement process goes. We, as a staff, we don't have authority to negotiate any price or anything, that's being handled by a totally separate company, and we can't even get into the discussion, but we can tell them what we are trying to do with this project. We can tell them about the project. So if somebody reaches out to you, please tell them, encourage them, tell them about the project, how important it is, and then if they have further question about engineering or anything like that, they can always reach out to us, and then we'll sit down with them and educate them about the project.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just, what happens to that pole again in front of 7?
So we are just putting a barrier curb, six-inch curb, in front of the poles, so nobody can just directly...
Right. And then it's behind the sidewalk now, and, yeah.
It'll be, I think, pretty much at the edge of the sidewalk.
Right.
And also, this year, we will be doing the pole relocation. This project will require us to relocate the electric utility poles that's all along Main Street, so that's, Brian tells me that he'll probably get started in about six to eight weeks or so. So you'll see some activities going on there.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Anybody in the public want to come up?
Rahat, so this one is going, it's out to bid through IDOT also, right?
Yes. So we are targeting January letting, but as I said, all those easements needs to be in, all certified and everything by the state, and that's end of October, I would say, November 3rd or something like that, the date. If we don't get all those easements by then, we might be forced to move to the March letting. And yesterday, we met with a consultant to discuss this plan. That's when they brought up this whole discussion about missing the January letting, going into March letting, and that has some implication on the project. The estimate right now for this project is 112 working days. Let me tell you what's working days and calendar days. So in IDOT's world, working days is pretty much Monday to Friday, but that doesn't mean it's 20 working days or 22 working days. They kind of factor in rain, shine, and hurricanes and all that stuff. So on like a good July month, which is a very peak season, they still estimate like 17 working days. So you can imagine May and June is less than that. So 112 days is almost the entire season. Like you pretty much start on May 1st and get done on November 30th. So if you go to the March letting, typically takes 60 days for the contract to be executed and, and, you know, come to the district one when they schedule the pre-con meeting. So pre-con meeting probably will be, let's say, May 15th, you know? And then the contractor gets about two weeks to mobilize, so you are like already end of May. So we were kind of discussing, and I'm just putting it out, because that's a reality that it's in front of us, that if we start end of May, then based on the working days that we have calculated, we may not get done end of November. So what, how do we play it? So we were throwing out some ideas, again, it's still too early, because we are still waiting for those temporary easement, that maybe, maybe we start at the Water Street end and then go all the way to Lincoln, finish that up, like break up the project, but in two phases. So get that done. It's one contract, it's one bidding, and then they button that up, you know, put surface and everything, and then they come back next year and do from Lincoln to all the way to Van Northwick. The implication of that is the residents who live on Main Street, they'll be seeing construction for two years. The length probably, you know, the working days and all probably gets a little bit longer, it's no longer 112 days, because there is some mobilization and all those involved with that. So there is, there is a little bit of challenge that we have. That's why I can't urge that if somebody reaches out to you, please, you know, talk to them and, and tell them to reach out to us, you know, to sit down and, and it's, again, temporary easement. We are actually taking out sidewalks from their property and putting it on the right-of-way side. We'll most likely going to be putting construction barricades on their property side to do the work, do some landscaping, do some driveway work, you know? If we do take out the sidewalk, then we may have to repair the driveways. So those are the things that we are asking permission from the residents to do.
I think it's important to note, too, that in those areas where you'd be going on to their property to take things out, we would be returning it in like-kind, if not better than it is today.
Yes, yes. That is correct.
I think it's just important to try to push those easements so we can get this thing moving.
Yeah. I don't want to see it drag out to two years. I mean, that would just be, especially the short span of the road, but to drag it out for two years would just be a mess. Plus, I want to see the stormwater improvements get done while we're out there, so.
Well, and the cost is going to go up too. If a contractor knows he's going to be working on this for two years, the cost is going to be different than if he can do it next year.
Yeah. No other questions? Okay.
Public doesn't have any comments? You guys good?
Comment?
Send me to zoom in.
Yeah, right there, where the arrow is, right there, what's the round that rubber is happening? Is there, is there curbing there where it says?
This is all carved, but this is all going to be...
Actually, nothing there.
It's depressed.
Changing there.
Yes. Yeah, because of parking.
Question, why didn't, why didn't you just extend that down past David's property straight, so that whole commercial area that is straight there, and turn it in by complete electric where there's no private curb? It's just, you know, so it's all common, right? Straight down in front of all David's, I just have a question.
I believe when we had the discussion, that he expressed that he doesn't need parking, and this is right at the intersection.
Oh, so it's for...
Right.
Well, and that's a 20-foot roadway from the center line, right, or 18 or 20 feet there?
Right.
And it's a 15-foot lane only in that one section of Main Street from, from 711 to 717.
Okay.
It narrows down, it's the only place on the street that it narrows down, correct?
Right.
So the rest of it is all the normal width of the street.
And what, and what was that little circle? Is that anything?
I'm trying to, trying to zoom in.
It says GV in it. It's right on the property, I just wondered if...
Yeah, GV.
Should we put a light pole there or something?
It's not a manhole or anything right there. David, do you know?
What is it? What's it say, GV? I think it's water valve.
Gas valve, yeah. Gas valve, gas valve, so it's a, it's an access for a gas valve. Yeah.
It's a gas valve.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, good to see it moving forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That it?
Mm-hmm.
On that? All right, then we're going to go on to Resolution 18-108R, authorize an execution of a contract with Oyer Construction for the 2018 TRICOM CIPP lining program for the amount of $265,776.32. Alman O'Brien?
We entered into agreement with Geneva and St. Charles for, you know, economies of scale, for sanitary and stormwater lining with the cured-and-placed pipe. We, we have it all budgeted, some of them, I guess we're kind of moving things around, but it looks like we have with the combined budgets, we have $275,000, and the total cost to us will be 200, as you said, Dave, $265,776.32. So that's pretty much what it comes down to, just fixing some sewers, you know, trying to stop the influ and infiltration in our sanitary sewers, which just kind of lessens the stress on our wastewater treatment facility.
That is correct, and this also includes some storm sewer work this year, and I can't remember if this is the third or fourth year we've done a joint project with the Tri-Cities, but this is now several multi-year programs that we're working together on.
So, and this stuff here, it's about 3/8 thick, and it just kind of gets poured into a pipe, and I think they use a balloon...
They do, and it becomes a structural, the material becomes stronger in the pipe.
Form the opening, it just expands to the outsides of the pipe, so. And it lasts a long time, so it's pretty good stuff.
How long is a long time?
What's that?
How long is a long time? Probably 30 years, 40?
Well, yeah, no, it's life of pipe, I mean, it's meant to be a permanent solution. So it's meant to be an alternative reconstruction, so.
And it's also flexible, that it'll move a little bit with the joint, so it'll be breakable?
No, it's, I mean, it's structural, so it's...
It's pretty rigid, when it cures. Anything else you need to, anybody have questions or comments? Anybody care to make a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Okay, motion by McFadden, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, consent agenda on that one?
Yeah.
All right, next one is the discussion on the, for communication during the power outages. Alman O'Brien, do you have that, or are we going to just go right to Laura or Gary on that?
I think we'll just go right to Laura on that one.
Well, we had noticed, as you know, we've been trying to do a better job of communicating during power outages. Previously, it was only during pretty massive impact power outages that we put information out there, and now it's more frequently. And because we've been communicating about power outages more frequently, we're getting feedback that we have a suddenly less reliable system. And so, just wanted to have a discussion about trying to get a balance between wanting to make sure that people know when there are significant power outage events, but also not to unnecessarily make people feel that the system has become any less reliable. So Gary has a memo that he attached to the agenda, I'll let him just walk through that information.
Sure, and with, with all that background information, I'm going to, on my memo, skip down to that fourth paragraph, because I think it's important to review the objectives of why we're doing what we're doing. And one of the stated objectives was to, to inform the members of City Council and the general public in a more timely manner of events that go on in the city. So I posed a bunch of questions here, and, you know, basically, I'll, I'll, I'll put them out there for discussion. Does the committee feel that the objective has been achieved, and in fact, are you receiving information in a more timely manner? And are you first learning a power outage from us as opposed to from someone giving you a call or sending you some other messages? If the answer to those is questions are yes, my next ones are, in my opinion, probably the most important questions, and that is, is that information that we're having a power outage enable you to better serve your residents and your wards? And is that information allowing you to make more informed decisions? And I bring that up in the context of the example I used earlier in that memo, in that we're now notifying people of any and all outage. So I'm just going to go on a limb and say, most of you probably were not affected by the 10 houses that were out last week on the east side. So, you know, did you all need to know about that within, you know, 10 minutes of it happening? I mean, is that, does that change the way you, you govern? I bring that up there because having every single outage put out on social media is leading to this notion that, hey, what's going on in Batavia, suddenly there's all these power outages, and you, you guys have read the social media dialogue as much as I have. So are we doing more harm, quote unquote, than good by advertising the way we're advertising? There's a, there's a balance between transparency and communications and also, you know, reputation. So we did come up with some recommendations on the second page. Number two, I'm going to skip number one for a second, but number two is what we always had done. Number two is during off-hours or even during working hours, when phone messages, when phones began to get call volumes coming in, with people saying that they had a power outage, we'd activate our telephone system, so that when people called the city, they would know power outage on the west side or power outage on the east side. In other words, they knew that we knew. So as long as they knew that we knew, you know, that they knew that we were working on it. Jumping back up to, up to number one, what we're doing now is, once we learn of a power outage, we're also then sending out an alert via our website, our alert system, that ends up sending out posts to... to social media. And sometimes, again, like I said, sometimes those alerts are going out for outages that prove to own, because, because we haven't been out there yet, and we haven't really kind of even seen the scope. Sometimes those, those alerts are going out for outages that are only impacting, you know, a block. And, and everybody else in the city is getting an alert about an outage that's probably not impacting them. So that's where number three comes in, in that, you know, maybe we want to, um, take a step back, maybe delay our alert a little bit so we can allow our crews to get out there, make an assessment. And if, yes, the, 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 the area is, is widespread and we're, we're certainly getting a number of, of, of people outage, send out an alert. But if the, if the outage is, is gonna only impact, you know, a small, small area, then maybe not send an alert out on that. And again, we're not trying to hide the information. Anyone in that small area is welcome to call us and find out why their power went out, or anybody on the west side of town who is not impacted by the ten houses on the east side. They can call us anytime and get a, a list of the outage reports. But it goes to, it goes to how much information is, is, is really useful to, you know, governing the city. The last one was continue to provide power outage alerts whenever an outage is in our industrial areas. And that's for our business customers to, to keep them, you know, informed as best we can whenever, whenever there's an outage. This last one, and I think we've talked about it several times, I mean, we, we are becoming a society that's more and more demanding of instant gratification and instant answers. I mean, I literally can pick up my phone, you know, type in, uh, type in Yahoo, and I all of a sudden have all the goings on in the world in about ten seconds at my fingertips. And that's what people are now expecting. Problem is, you know, in the real world, in running an electric utility, I, I have guys that drive a truck out to physical wires, into physical trees down, into physical transformers, and all of that takes time. We're not swiping our fingers across the screen to figure out what's going on. We have to physically come to the garage and physically drive out there, so it takes time. And, and there's that disconnect, and, and same thing happens with water main breaks. I mean, there, there's, there's, I live in the physical world in public works. I don't live in a digital world. And so there is that, that inherent disconnect that's become more and more pronounced throughout my career of the public wanting to know why they can't have an answer as quickly as they can on Google when they call us up and say, well, why is my power out? You know, literally, we have gotten calls, the lights have gone out. I'm walking down the hallway from my office, you guys have been to my office, walking down the hallway from my office to Tabitha's desk, which is about a hundred feet, where she's already getting calls from people saying, why are my lights out? You know, we, we haven't even, the lights haven't even cooled down yet. We don't, we don't even know. But that, that is quite common. And so, some of this is trying to temper that, that, that we need to set up expectations that we go out and we do our very best, and we respond as quickly as we can, and restore power as quickly as we can. But it's not gonna happen as quickly as you can get some, the answer, somebody's answer on Google. It's just not gonna happen that way.
Yes. Um, I guess I kind of thought about this a lot, I've read it through the memo, and, and, you know, I kind of liken it to our police department. I don't need to know when somebody gets pulled over for a traffic ticket, but if they think that there's a shooter near a school with a gun, somebody walking by a school with a gun, we should know about it. So I think that's kind of the same application I'd like to see us develop with this. We don't need to know if there's power out to ten houses. If there's power out to a hundred houses, or five hundred houses, or whatever the number we pick it should be, I think that's when we should know. Um, I think the public's just gonna have to get used to the fact, you don't need to know that there's ten houses out on the east side, and if one person posts that, everybody else that follows up and says something about it says, well, power's on here, power's on here. You know, I mean, it, it is to the point where, you know, people want to know things more than they need to know. My feeling.
Yeah, I think, I think we're actually reacting to a perception that doesn't exist, just like the public is, on this. In that, I don't think that we've given it enough time. Because where we're concerned about a negative tone, if we think that we don't put out the information and it's gonna stop that what's going on, we're mistaken. The fact of the reality is, it is a digital world, and the customers out there are going to throw it out there no matter what. And if we're not cognizant of that, we're going to make the problem worse. Because then they're going to say, because the perception is already of Prairie State, we can't change that. We can't change the perception that power is going out when everyone recently, it's all focused because we had two large, within a weekend, entire city power outages. That affected a lot of the, the discussion that was going on at those moments. The other thing that I did see and have seen when power's out is a much more positive that other residents are stepping forward and saying, I got the notification. There are more notifications about to people. You don't have to wonder what's going on, or why are you jumping on Facebook for the first notification of it? Why aren't you reaching out to the city to find out what's going on? People have been pressing that out there, saying, contact the city, get the answers from them, so that it stops this instant gratification. That has to have, that has to have time to work. Because we can't be concerned that we've had two things that are affecting the public perception and then react to that, because then we're reacting to their reacting, and it's a vicious cycle. Give it a little more time where more people can then sort that out for themselves. Because if we're not informing them, you're going to have what was going on before. My power's out, my power's out, my power's out. Why isn't the city telling us? And that will be the narrative that we can't control. So it's always best to be open about the information in a timely manner, because then when there are the times where the ten are out, nobody posts about that. It doesn't take a life on its own. It is the larger ones. So if it is a certain amount, you know, a planned outage, these ones are out, those don't necessarily have to go to. They can go to whoever subscribes in that area, or whatever you target those. But it still needs a little more time to find out what's actually going on. Because I've seen when it has taken that negative tone, there is no counter to it until we started pushing the messages. And you see a lot more people defending public utilities and the electric than ever before. So there is a bonus to that.
True.
I think there's, there's probably some sort of middle path, uh, in terms of being open and providing all the information and actively pushing all the information out to people that maybe don't need to get it. Would be having an available source that people could go to and get the same information that we're pushing out, just not pushing it out every time it happens, which seems often if there was a place on a webpage you could go to and say, yes, we know the power's out here. And then if there was a big event, you could maybe push it out wide scale, but not push out every single event, but let people know there's a place you can always go to always get the same information that we were pushing out there, and we kind of alleviate that whole inundating people with information they don't need because they're not affected, and making people think, wow, geez, power's out again somewhere.
So you're saying, just put it on, put it on the, put it on the website, and they can find it if they're looking for it?
Yeah.
And the call-in? I mean, that's a great tool also. The recording?
People don't want to call, they, either they go to City of Batavia, of Electric City. Oh, we see there's an outage on the east side. I guess they know that I'm out, so.
Well, and that's something that I will say on social media. That's one thing, since the city's been much better at putting that out there, most people, like Marty says, with people defending it, just copy the link and post that there. Here's what the city sent out.
And that putting it out on a webpage gives them the ability to do that exact same thing. Well, did you go to the page? Here's the link. Go check here first before you start lobbing it out everywhere.
I like that idea. I think that's a good balance.
Absolutely.
We're not advertising that it's happening, but if you want to know, you go here and you can find it.
Yeah.
Or call. And if they call, they get, they get the answers.
Yeah, just to clarify, so if they call, they get, they get a recorded message, and that doesn't prevent them from, from, from getting through. They can still talk to a live person. It's just they get the recorded message first, and that satisfies some people. And we can certainly work with Chris and Howard on having a, 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 a live webpage that would still receive these alerts, but then alerts wouldn't necessarily go out to the world. But people would know where these alerts are, and they could access them. Then if we decide we want to send the alert out to the world, we can send the alert out to the world based on magnitude.
And I, I've said this before, and I, you guys kind of reiterated it, but people, i- in the, this is a digital world. We're not gonna get around it. We're just not. And the fact is, people just want to know that there, something's going on, that they, they want to know that we know. That's all. Um, I don't think they, they care if there's a ground fault. I don't care if it's a blue heron. They don't care if it's a rabbit. They don't, it, just the fact that they have this, they have the sense that we know we're on top of it. If it's one spot where we can put that, that can, they can always go to, that's great.
And then if it is a big thing, it's nice at that point to be able to tell the public, okay, we know what it is. It's affecting half the town. It's gonna take a couple hours for our guys to fix it, and, you know.
Something that would go out as an alert.
Right, an alert, right. And I, I think those are the ones that I think mean something to people now, and, and people are starting to really recognize that or share that, because then it's from the source. It's not, you know, what somebody thought they heard from their neighbor while they're standing out in the rain.
I think the estimate on time is what I think. I'm getting the sense that people want to know. You know, a couple hour, will it, is it a quick fix? Is it gonna take half a day?
So anybody else? So Gary, I have a question for you. So, we all know it's a redundant system, right? We all know we do a lot better than any other electric utility in the area in, in repairs. That people are out half an hour, an hour, and, and they're put back in with our system. We flip switches, we do what we need to do to get them powered up again. So we do have a very good electrical system. But we do have outages. What is the main source or cause of outages?
The big ones are wildlife, um, trees and storms, I mean, you know, wind, windstorms and stuff. Generally speaking, our infrastructure as a utility is in pretty good shape. I'll point to Batavia Avenue Apartments as an example. They started to experience a series of, of outages due to cable faults, and so we made a CIP project to fix their problem, and now they've been outage, outage free. Laurel Lynn Apartments is right now in the same boat. They're, they're starting to experience a series of outage due to cable faults. Laurel Lynn, we talked about it in our media review, that one's probably gonna get bumped up to twenty nineteen. So when we, when we have infrastructure problems, we identify them and we prioritize them Paramount Substation. You all are very aware of Paramount Substation, what we're doing with that. So we don't have underlying, like, infrastructure problems out there that we're ignoring. Um, as, as, as the problems surface, or again, in our long-term plan, um, Boneyo Village would be a good example of, there wasn't really any underlying problem out there. There was a few residents that were experiencing voltage issues, but as far as the whole neighborhood, there weren't any underlying problems, but they were on the oldest part of our whole system. So we invested in rebuilding that system. So we do both. We, we identify problems and fix them, and we reinvest in the system and make the system new again. So I, back to your answer, it's, it's the wildlife, it's storms. We invest a lot of money every year in tree trimming, but still trees come down in storms. Um, and then it's infrastructure, it's actual physical faults in the, in the infrastructure.
So that was the point you just made that I, I wanted you to make, is that really the causes are things beyond our control. We do tree trimming, but when a storm comes up and blows a tree down, there's not much we can do about that. And there's not a whole lot we can do about squirrels and wildlife.
We try to take protections for, for those things, but, you're right.
But our infrastructure is sound, and we do maintain it.
Real quick, the work that we're doing out there to upgrade stuff, or remove some of the stuff inside, would that get the switchgear inside where it wouldn't be susceptible to wildlife? So that will be an upgrade? Okay. That was something I forgot to mention the other night when we were talking about that, that, that should be a beneficial thing that we should talk about.
Absolutely.
To our system that with moving it inside, you take that part of it out of the equation.
We have more control.
Very, about thirty seconds or less. We have the one thirty-eight subs. The one thirty-eight subs feed, in this case, Paramount Sub. Paramount Sub is probably one of our most important subs because it feeds our industrial part. That's what we're doing now, is we're taking that important sub, and we're splitting it in half, and we're bringing some of it indoors to prevent, prevent that.
Marty?
Yeah, so just real quick, in a case of you can't beat 'em, join 'em, it's with technology. If we're concerned about the perception, and it's a lot of misinformation or don't know what the process is, we've done it for other things in town, do a quick PSA on what a lineman does and what happens when they go out to the field. And then that gets shared along with, here's the power out, this is the expected time. And now they have something people now know, and other people are gonna start sharing that.
That's a great idea.
That is a good idea.
Dave?
Somewhat related, as I was driving into town yesterday, I'm looking at the concrete poles on Wilson Street.
Yeah.
When are we starting that process?
Well, I just had that conversation with Brian last week. We should be taking delivery of them, I'm assuming, this week. He told me they were coming. So the, the delivery of the poles is coming here in September, and then it's this fall. They're gonna be starting to, I told them we need to get the worst ones before the fro, because really ice terms are what you really have to worry about with those poles. So we've gotta get the worst ones done before winter flies.
Okay, thank you.
So one last point I'll make, and, you know, we're, we're always selling our electric utility. I mean, we're, we're very proud of it. And what we're doing at the Paramount Substation should help us sell industrial users to come to Batavia also, because it's just a more reliable system.
Correct, more robust, more reliable.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you. Anybody else? That's it. Thank you, Gary.
Okay, next item, project status, and we've got fifteen minutes to finish this meeting.
Yes, sir. Um, I've got two items that I wanted to talk about under project status, and one is the, um, slowdown campaign, which came to a close last Friday. We got really good feedback. Although we do have some residents who love the campaign so much, they want to keep their signs up. And so I'd just like to suggest to people, please take them down, because that, that is the effectiveness of the campaign. When there are no signs, and all of a sudden there's hundreds of signs up, people take notice of them, and that is why the campaign is effective. So we'll repeat the campaign again in the future, but now that the campaign has come to an end, we definitely want you to either store your sign, or, um, they can also bring it in to the city, and they can pick up a new one in the future when they want to participate in a future campaign. Um, the second is, uh, the city has produced an informational brochure to teach residents about, um, Home Rule and what Home Rule is, and what would be the effect of the city's loss of Home Rule status. And we also will, um, along, that will go to each household. And we will also be hosting a live informational meeting on October eighth at seven o'clock PM here at City Hall. And that will be before, um, a panel to include myself, Peggy Colby, um, Dan Yule, who will be able to talk about the, um, what the city has been able to realize, um, through the crime-free housing under Home Rule, and then also the city attorney. And an opportunity, there'll be both a presentation that gives some basic information about Home Rule, but then there'll also be an opportunity for the members of the audience to ask any questions that they might have about Home Rule. And this will be, um, filmed by BATV, so those who are unable to attend the meeting will be able to, uh, watch a recorded version of it. And that's it. Unless anybody has questions for me. Oh, I know we often have questions about the Siemens property. All of the fencing has been removed, and it got load this week, so. Yes.
Um, what's the status on the, on the stormwater project on Geese?
Um, Gary, can I ask you to talk about those? I'm all up to date on Area Three, but I'm less up to date on Geese.
Geese is winding up too. I mean, Geese, um, should be going to final paving here in the next couple of weeks. I mean, just like we said, I think substantial completion by the end of September for all of our major projects, except College and Wilson, that one's gonna be ongoing, so.
Well, you're up there, Gary. We got an email last week from a resident on, I think on Morton, um, about wanting her driveway re-blacktopped, and I, I, I don't think that that's something we should consider.
Laura has been in contact with that.
Okay. Other, other than the apron, I think if that's been destroyed during the construction over there.
As a matter of fact, um, as part of the project, we had contemplated replacing all of the driveway aprons that were affected by the construction, so that's already part of the project.
Okay.
But not the rest of the driveway.
And I had a conversation with her separately that, to get a little more information about it, and I referred her to you guys, to, she should be working with you guys about any concerns related to prior projects is what the potential was, so I told her to investigate that with you.
Yes, thank you.
So Gary, back to Geese. You know, we, we had. So Gary, back to Geese. You know, we had two or three discussions on Geese about controlling dust. What is generating all that dust?
Just the open trench, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
I mean, is it, is it, trenching and traffic?
Yeah, it's a matter of keeping traffic down there.
So it's sand, it's, it's, what kind of dust is it?
It's the material they're using for backfill, so yeah.
Using for backfill, so they're using stone for backfill?
Yep.
And so that would, I would say it's some sort of, what kind of dust would that be?
The limestone, probably.
It's a limestone dust. And so, I, again, I've told you the one time that I drove by, and I couldn't see the skidster, there was so much dust he was generating, and trying to sweep the road.
Yeah, he was creating his own dust, yeah.
Right, I mean, he was, you know, he wasn't doing any good. He wasn't really picking up anything. Saw something similar again today. And, you know, we've had some complaints with residents about dust in their home. And I guess, you know, working in construction now, and with dust being a big issue with OSHA, nineteen twenty-six standards, I mean, it's a new, it's the new flash. And, you know, with, on the job site now, if somebody is drilling a hole into a brick wall or a concrete wall, and they're making any little bit of dust, they have to stop immediately, even if they have a mask on, because other people walking around could potentially inhale that dust. And I'm thinking, well, these guys operate...
That's cement and silica, that'll...
That's cement and silica, but...
That's a little different for your lungs, but yeah.
But it's same, same deal, though, right? And so I'm thinking, well, the guy driving his skidster, if OSHA came by, there'd be, there'd be a lot of issues. And what are we, are we hurting the residents with that kind of dust? So I really would like to see some water being used to keep the dust down. Is that...
Yeah, we've talked about the idea of dust control watering, and making sure that's on our contracts going forward. I'll push back a little bit, though, about limestone dust versus cement and silica. I mean, they are, they are two different...
They're different animals, but nonetheless, if you breathe it in, you're still breathing in, not a man-made object, you're bringing in, even, I don't want to get into all of it with limestone, but you bring that in. It's like, it's a natural product, right? That doesn't break down anymore, and it'll still attach to your lungs. And so...
I agree, and it goes to an exposure level with employers and employees.
Right, but...
The guy drilling the hole is, all likelihood, a tradesperson who's drilling holes every day throughout his whole career. He's gonna be exposed to forty years of silicone dust versus a neighbor who is exposed to, you know, a month and a half of dust.
Right, I get it, I get it. But I just, you know, the people are screaming, because dust is in their homes and everything else. And, you know, as a contractor who's worked on roads, I mean, I took it upon myself, Dave can, I believe, attest to that, that you water because you want to accommodate and not impose upon people. And this contractor seems to be imposing upon the residents in the first ward. And so I don't think we need to put it in a contract, well, we should put it in the contract, but he should know instinctively, control the dust. So if we can help him control the dust by telling him and telling him, let's please do that. Thank you.
I just want to kind of agree with you in that getting a lot of the same complaints with dust, and as you saw from some of the complaints over in the Area Three, that people are saying there's a lot of dust, it's a lot more than usual, what's going on. So I don't think it's related to just Geese, and if it's our contractors that are doing it, our obligation is to speak up for our residents, because they're the ones that are telling us, it's not so much the breathing or the OSHA standards, they're saying, why is there so much dust around? And we should have answers that we're trying to make sure that our contractors are going to keep it at a minimum.
I, we will include those in our contract, there's no doubt about it. But for those of you who've been on construction through your whole career, and I've been on construction for my whole career, I'll put up the same argument Byron puts up. We can put odor protection on the waste treatment plant, it doesn't mean there's not gonna be odors. And I could put dust control watering into a contract, it doesn't mean there's not gonna be dust. That is the nature of construction.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, the residents, by all means, have to bear a really poor situation for a summer, and that when they, when they, you know, go in their house, they're gonna see a layer of dust because of all the dust in the air. But for the next forty-five years, their house is not gonna have sewer backups anymore, and their property values are gonna go up, because we've now done a major infrastructure project. So I understand the burden, and fully agree, we need to do every step we can to minimize it. Residents in turn, you know, need to, and ninety-nine percent of them are fully just grin and bear it, and they know the really good stuff that's coming down as a result of it.
I do get it, you gotta break an egg to make an omelet.
Yeah.
I understand that, but we gotta control the dust more.
It's a, I don't want to belabor this, but it is a very fine line on what you do. I agree with everything everybody's saying. But, you know, in the contracts, there should probably be some provision for dust control or de-watering. But then again, they're gonna get paid by the units that they do, and who's gonna determine how much then how often? And then the next thing you're gonna have is if you do watering, then you're gonna have the residents complaining, because they can't even drive down the road without dragging mud onto their driveway.
You're not gonna win, Gary.
No, I know.
So, so it's...
I've seen both sides.
You done, Mike?
I'm done, uncle.
Okay.
Put a fork in me. Uh, yes, thank you. Just to go back, and Alan, you might answer this, the Home Rule show, that'll be on BATV, will that be in video form, that's shareable, or is that, you have to tune in to BATV at a certain time?
Should be able...
No, they'll record it, so that it'll be on demand.
It'll be on demand, both on the BATV YouTube page, and then also, we can have a link directly to the city webpage, if they can set that up.
Yes.
Any others? No others? Okay. We do have executive session on the agenda for the purpose of collective bargaining, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by O'Brien, second by Sovati, for the executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining, and there won't be anything coming out of it?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?